And the execution and adaptability that were exhibited in this case by the leadership team there was seriously flawed. And so to ensure that that would not happen again, they would be moved from positions in which they could, in fact, command and control at a future time, at a future event. I have to have that comfort level that the leadership will not make some of the same mistakes that were made at MacArthur Park, which are quite obvious. And to that end, that's where the, even while we can investigate more extensively, there was enough available, information available to me to make the moves that I made. And in terms of Chief Hillman, Chief Hillman's responsibility is to the best of our ability to try to train the command staff on what we're supposed to do and also on adaptability. The idea is the best laid plans, you always have to be in a position to adapt to changing circumstances. And the adaptability to the changing circumstances in this event was seriously flawed, seriously flawed, and should not have occurred.
District Eight Councilmember Bernard Parks asked Chief Bratton to describe what the scene was like on his arrival.
Could you give us a brief description of what you saw when you got to the scene? Was the event over? Was the crowd dispersed or just what were the conditions?
That's correct. I arrived at the scene at approximately 6:50, 6:55. And at that time, I arrived at Park View and Sixth. And that was the, excuse me, I'm sorry, Park View and Wilshire. And that was the, no, I'm going to apologize, we were at the other end of the park, Park View and Sixth. And met there with Chief Patient, who I had requested to respond to the scene, Chief Carter, Commander Gray, Captain Egan, and also Andre Barat arrived almost simultaneously, a short time thereafter with me, as well as Chief Perez from our Professional Standards Bureau. All of whom I had requested to respond to the scene for briefing. The event was in fact over, the crowd had been dispersed. Most of the remaining activity, which was some small groups of agitators, was occurring three to four blocks away from that location. At that location, there were a number of news media gathered, there were also a number of the principal organizers of the group who were there just talking with the news media.
And joining us now by phone is Los Angeles City Council President Eric Garcetti. Mr. President, always good to have you on Council Week in Review.
Thanks so much, Jack. Great to be back.
We've been hearing at length about this city council task force looking into the events of May 1st and beyond. What are the objectives? What are you trying to achieve with the task force?
Well, one thing we didn't want it to be was another layer of investigation. We wanted this to be oversight of all of the investigations that are ongoing and to ensure that the public's voice is heard in these investigations, so that we can make sure that the community, that people who are involved in the area around MacArthur Park, the police unions, individual officers if they want, that everybody would have a place, that their voice would be heard, and to ensure that these investigations are really targeted towards getting to the bottom of what went wrong and how we can prevent it in the future.
If you're looking specifically for public input, as well as the formal investigations, where would meetings like this be held? How will you make them public? How will people know?
Well, first one, we held in the community, in a school adjacent to MacArthur Park. The next meeting, which will probably be in about a week and a half, most likely will be back in the community as well. And we want to make it as easy, as friendly, as open, and as accessible to members of the MacArthur Park, Westlake neighborhood, to ensure that nobody feels that they have to go long distance. We'll probably have some hearings at City Hall, which is close by, of course, but we really want to emphasize that this is a wonderful community, a place where people have done tremendous work in the last few years to make it safe, and that we want to be able to protect people's rights to be able to be out there, be it media, be it a group of lawful assemblers, or be it police officers themselves.
Speaking of which, of course, we've seen Chief Bratton before the council last week, again this week, preliminary reports on the investigation that he's been giving you, bits and drabs of. When can we expect a final report?
Well, we had a good update, 30 days that we mandated to come back, and that was last week and this week. They estimate another 30 days they'll come back to the full council, but the work of the task force is to keep up every week or two with the ongoing investigations. The information we learned this past week was very helpful in looking at a timeline of what happened. Certainly, we got the perspective from the eyes of the police in terms of what went wrong and what was going on with some of the agitators. We asked for more detail in describing, what would you do differently? How should policy change? And what institutional shifts does the Los Angeles Police Department need to undertake to make sure that everybody is protected and doing their job? Be it cameramen and camerawomen from the media, be it people who are out there expressing their First Amendment rights as Americans, or be it the members of the police department themselves, who we want to feel safe and we want them to do their job in as clear and transparent a way as possible.
Of course, people who have been watching this program, watching you people work, have noticed that you've asked for the command staff that was in charge during the incident at MacArthur Park, come before council to explain what happened, to submit themselves to your questions. So far, they've not complied, and I've heard some people say, wait a minute, isn't that insubordination? What's going on here?
We have asked, led by Councilmembers Zine, Councilmember Parks, and some others have asked for the incident commanders, who have been spoken for by the chief and others, their actions and decisions have been described by the department, to have the opportunity to come before us and give their side of the story. They may turn that down, and under the police officers' bill of rights, they have the option to whether they want to come or not when a formal request has been made. But we wanted to ensure that the police department was making that request, and what we found out this week was that request had not yet been made, that everybody just assumed that they'd say no. I think that those officers have to make those decisions themselves, and that there could be a great deal of very important information added by hearing what it was like on the ground from those commanders themselves. If they do refuse, the council does have subpoena power, but we need to look at what's the most effective way of getting to the bottom of what happened. And obviously, with personnel investigations going on, some of these individuals may want to, you know, prefer to remain silent and let those investigations go their way.
And also, I gather that it's quite possible that in making some early personnel moves during the first week after May 1st, Chief Bratton may have put some people beyond your reach with subpoenas.
Yes, well, no, we have actually, our subpoena power is across the board, it's not just for city employees. So if we exercise that subpoena power, that's something that we could ask of any resident, anybody who's here in Los Angeles. But that's only really, that's the nuclear option if we can't get the information in any other way. And if the investigations are doing their work in the right way, we should not only have their answers, you know, in the detailed reports that will be issued, but if there are any fragile or delicate issues that we need to hear in closed session, we have that option to go into closed session to ensure that we're protecting the city against liability and to ensure that we're protecting the privacy of those investigations. But we are really bending over backwards to make this as public a process, because the public, after all, were the ones that were affected, and they deserve to make sure that their government is ensuring this doesn't happen again.
And I have a feeling you'll also get some pretty extensive media coverage, because members of the media and obviously our professional organizations are very interested in watching this as well.
Unquestionably, and we've been working very closely, actually, with a number of media organizations to push LAPD to articulate what the media protocols, which we had seen develop after the Democratic National Convention of 2000, those protocols had been put in place. It seems like many of those were not followed. And so we want to ensure that the task force, probably one of the meetings will be exclusively, to hear from the media what went wrong and logistically, how can we set these things up better to ensure not only, of course, that the excesses we saw never happen again, but to ensure that the smooth flow of information and that the rights of the media, even in chaotic situations, are protected. And that's the heart of the matter for me, is that even when things get tough, the DNC protocols guarantee that the press can stay on site in the midst of a skirmish, because it's very important for accountability, it's very important for Angelenos to know what's going on in their city, and when we lose the ability for the press to tell that story, it's a sad day for all of us.
You've had a chance to hear from several members of the command staff of the LAPD. Will the officers who were actually on the front line, May 1st, as well as the participants in the march who have been identified possibly as agitators, will they be investigated, disciplined, brought before the city council?
Well, not before the city council. I mean, the agitators, for instance, won't be coming to testify before us. I mean, this is, again, not an independent investigation. What it is, is we are trying to ensure that the oversight and the actions are occurring to right what was wrong and to make sure that there is justice served here. Justice served may mean disciplining some police officers, protecting other ones so that there's no scapegoats, making sure that agitators have indeed been investigated, arrested where they were assaulting officers or anything else, and at the same time that the members of the press and the regular people that were out there, that their concerns, their injuries and other things are addressed. So we're not looking to do the investigation. We are ensuring that the police commission does its job and the inspector general, that we, anything that goes on at the FBI level or the district attorney's office is folded into that mix, and that at the end of the day, the department with its internal investigations unit makes sure that the discipline necessary will occur while the policy changes for the long haul.
And of course, you as council president and your fellow council members, you do have a fiduciary responsibility here. Forty-two people hurt, seven police officers included. In terms of lawsuits, this could cost Los Angeles taxpayers a good deal of money, couldn't it?
Absolutely. All Angelenos, all of us, will pay for this, which is why it is such an important issue. This is not an isolated incident where a couple people, you know, may have crossed the line. This is something that we all are going to pay for, quite literally, for some time. And to ensure that we don't pay this sort of money out again for violations of folk civil rights, and that we protect our police officers when those sort of provocations occur, we are smarter, we are better, and we should have the training than what was reflected that day on May 1st. And I have tremendous respect for the men and women who put on a uniform every single day to protect us, but we also have to protect our rights and the rights of the media, and that's the heart of this matter. That's our, not only fiduciary responsibility, that is our moral obligation.
Well, we will all be watching. With your help, District 13 Councilmember and Council President Eric Garcetti, thanks for joining us on Council Week in Review.
Thanks so much. It's a pleasure.
There was no vote necessary on item number 33, the continued consideration of the Los Angeles Police Department and Board of Police Commissioners' report to the council. The matter will stay open for further reports to the special task force. Watch Council Week in Review for highlights of the week's council meetings and listen for item numbers associated with those discussions you have an interest in. Then go to the world wide web and listen to those discussions in their entirety using the new City of Los Angeles video on demand feature. Visit the city's website at lacity.org and follow the instructions on the screen. Now, if you have suggestions or comments about any of the programs you see here on Channel 35, or would like to receive a free viewer guide, call our viewer hotline at (213) 473-3978. And remember, you can watch all Los Angeles City Council meetings live in their entirety on Tuesdays, Wednesdays, and Fridays, beginning at 10:00 a.m. On Sundays, you can watch the replay of all the week's meetings, also beginning at 10:00 a.m. Council Week in Review can be seen Monday through Friday at 9:30 a.m. and 6:30 p.m. on Saturday and Sunday at 9:30 a.m. Well, that concludes our program for the week ending June 8th, 2007. On behalf of Antoinette Feliciano and everyone here at Channel 35, I'm Jack Popejoy. Thank you for watching, and please join us for the next Council Week in Review.
Moving is so much of who we are. It's easy to take it for granted. Multiple sclerosis stops people from moving. We exist to make sure it doesn't. The National Multiple Sclerosis Society is a collective of passionate individuals united by a common goal, to address the challenges of each person whose life is affected by MS. We believe that moving is not just something you can or can't do, but rather is who you are, that if you are alive, you move along with, because of, and in spite of the great big turning world. Join the movement, the National Multiple Sclerosis Society, at nationalmsociety.org.
LA City View, Channel 35. Your city, your channel.
Good morning, Los Angeles, and welcome to the City Council meeting for Wednesday, June 13, 2007. We are in the John F. Raro Council Chambers, Room 340 of City Hall, where we meet every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday at 10:00 a.m., and we are broadcast live on Channel 35, as well as rebroadcast in the evening, and we want to welcome our viewers on L.A. City View, our city channel. Also available online, and you can always click on the links at the L.A. City webpage, lacity.org, and watch live streaming video, as well as now video on demand of archived council meetings. And finally, you can always track us on Council Phone, which is 213-621-CITY, in which you can listen to our meetings of the City Council or any of our committees through that audio service through your telephones. I want to thank the council members who are here pursuing to council rules on time. Council members Cardenas, Grul, Labange, Perry, Rosendahl, Weiss, and Zine. Councilmember Parks is excused today, and Mr. Smith is excused until 11:00. Ms. Han is here. Thank you very much, Ms. Han. So with that, we are awaiting one more member, Councilmember Alakon, Councilmember Weezer, Councilmember Reyes, and Councilmember Wesson, if you will please join us as soon as possible, we will be able to begin the meeting. We meet here, as I mentioned, every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday, except for the first Friday of the month in which we are in Van Nuys City Hall. If you live closer to Van Nuys, you can always testify remotely via teleconferencing in our Van Nuys City Hall facilities even when we're here. Vice versa, when we're in Van Nuys, you can come to City Hall and you'll be heard. Any members of the public who wish to be heard on items that have not yet had a public hearing can fill out a speaker card in the back and hand that to one of the sergeants-at-arms, and we'll make sure to get your card in for those items. There's also general public comment for items that are not on the agenda but are nevertheless under our jurisdiction, in which we can hear you. So with that, we have a quorum, and Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Alakon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, eleven members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Thank you. I'd like to recognize Mr. Rosendahl for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. We're delighted to have Kentwood Elementary School here today. All the students are getting a firsthand experience of government in action. Could they all stand up and wave? The cameras will go to the back of the room. Let's give them a big round of applause, the kids from Kentwood Elementary School. Thank you all for coming, and make sure you go up to the tower, to the top of the building, and see how beautiful the view is, especially today, it's very beautiful, and thank you for coming down here. And one of you might be the next President of the United States when you grow up, so think about politics. We need good kids in government. Yes, thank you. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rosendahl. First order of business, Madam Clerk.
Approval of minutes.
Ms. Han moves, and Mr. Reyes seconds. If there's no objection, those will be unanimously approved. Next item.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Mr. Weiss moves, Mr. Zine seconds. Without objection, those two will be unanimously approved. Can run through the agenda, next.
Mr. President, we have several requests to consider before beginning the regular agenda. There are requests to continue item number nine to January 30, 2008, as requested by the applicant.
Okay, is there any objection, colleagues, on item number nine, to continue till the 30th of January, 2008? If not, so ordered. Any other continuations?
There is also a request to continue number 39 to June 19.
Okay, colleagues, number 39, any objection to continuing item number 39 till the 19th of June? Seeing none, that too will be approved.
The final continuance request is for item number 13, continue to July 13, 2007.
Okay, if there's no objection to that, that will be continued as well, seeing none. All right, if we can take through the first items.
Items number one through 10, with the exception of nine, are items noticed for public hearings. Items number one through eight are hearings for street lighting districts. The recommended council action is to confirm the assessment.
All right, those are before, since those are ordinances, why don't we hold those on the table till we have 12 members? Next items, please.
Number 10 is also an ordinance. Would you like to hold that item?
Yes, let's do that as well.
Next are items 11 through 29, and those are items for which public hearings have been held. Item number 11 is the confirmation of a city official. Would you like to hold that at the desk?
Yes, let's hold item 11 on the desk, please, and let's hold 12 on the desk, too, as an ordinance. That leaves 14 through 29. I'd like to call 28 special. Okay.
2328, thank you.
And other specials? We have 23 and 28 so far, any other specials? All right, well, on those, we will... Do we have any cards on those? Or those have already been held? Okay, so we've had the public hearings on that. Why don't we open the roll on the balance, please? Close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
That is approved. Next items, please.
Next are items 30 through 49, and those are items for which public hearings have not been held. Ten votes are required for consideration.
Okay, we have cards on 31 and 37, and...
Mr. President, there are also cards on 12, 28, and 42.
I believe 12, we already had the hearing, is that correct?
Yes, that's right.
And 28, we've already had the hearing as well, though we may reopen that, of course. So we will, on these items, just, the cards will trigger on 31 and 37 at public hearing. Any other specials? Mr. Cardenas? I have no card on 42. Do we have a card on 42? Okay, they're informed we have a card on 42 as well. We'll call that special. Mr. Cardenas?
At appropriate time, reconsider item 29.
Okay, come back to that. Any other specials in these items, colleagues? Ms. Perry? You okay?
I wanted to reconsider 15.
15, you wanted to reconsider?
Yeah.
Okay, we'll come back to 15 and 28 in one moment. Mr. Rosendahl? It's been called special. And we have a card on 30 as well. So that leaves the balance. We'll open and close the public hearings on the balance. If we can open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
Those are approved. If we can open the roll, reconsideration of 15 and 28, please. 29 or 28?
Twenty.
Please open the roll, 15, 29, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Eleven ayes.
And we'll call those special. That was item 29 for Mr. Cardenas, and 15 was Ms. Perry, is that correct? Number 15, okay. Next item.
Next item is item number 50, and that is a closed session.
Okay, let's hold that on the table for closed session. If we can... Next item, please.
Next item is item number 51 on the supplemental agenda, and that is an item for which public hearing has been held.
Okay, anybody wishing to call 51 special? Seeing none, let's go ahead and open the roll on 51, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. If we can recess this meeting, call the roll for the special meeting, please.
Alakon, Cardenas, Grul, Han, Weezer, Labange, Parks, Perry, Reyes, Rosendahl, Smith, Weiss, Wesson, Zine, Garcetti, twelve members present in a quorum, Mr. President.
Okay, two items there. 52 and 53, we've had public hearings on it, we do not have cards anyway. Anybody wishing to call 52 or 53 special? Seeing none, let's go ahead, open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. If we can come back to the regular meeting, we now have 12 members for the ordinances. If we can take up items one through eight, number 10, number 12. We've had a public hearing on 12 already. Okay, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Those are approved. Ms. Grul?
On behalf of Mr. Parks, could we have 52 and 53 go forthwith?
Absolutely, without objection, colleagues, 52 and 53. Yes, Mr. Reyes?
On number 27, please.
27, forthwith, without objection. Okay.
Number 10, forthwith.
And number 10 for Mr. Labange, forthwith, without objection. So ordered. Okay, let's come back to public comment now. Oh, yeah, Ms. Han?
Sure, please. Oh, good, thank you. Mr. President, we have another introduction, we have another school here today visiting our City Hall. We have the 7th grade class from St. Lawrence School in Watts, and we have Father Peter Banks, who is accompanying them, as well as their teacher, Lisa Hernandez, a great school in Watts that is really a beacon for that community, and I want to give a real shout-out to Father Peter Banks, who, on a regular basis... You will see Father Banks strolling, just walking through the communities of Watts, walking through our housing developments, talking to people, praying for people, and his love and commitment to the community of Watts over all these years has made a real difference, and we meet regularly to talk about the issues that affect that community, and we love St. Lawrence, and we love the kids that go there, and we know that they are being prepared to really be productive young people in our society. So why don't you all stand up and wave and welcome St. Lawrence? And have a great day here in downtown Los Angeles.
Thank you very much. Ms. Han, I'd like to recognize Mr. Zine for an introduction, then we'll go to public.
Thank you. If we can have the students come behind my chair right here, as quickly as they can, Mr. President and colleagues, AFS, International Voluntary Nonprofit Organization, whose mission is to provide intercultural learning opportunities to help people develop the knowledge, skills, and understanding needed to create a more just and peaceful world. They're joining me right now as they approach. Founded by the American Field Service ambulance drivers that served our troops in World War I and World War II, started AFS International Student Exchange Program in 1948. This program's been involved since 1948. Since 1948, more than 325,000 students have spent either a summer semester or a full year of high school, living with a volunteer host family in one of more than 55 countries. And 82 of the AFS alumni have gone on to serve as ambassadors in their home countries. October 24th and 25th of this year, AFS hosting the 60th Anniversary Celebration of the United Nations in New York. The AFS Greater Los Angeles 2006-2007 School Year, 10 AFS students in Greater Los Angeles four attend L.A. USD schools. We have representatives from Osaka, Japan. Osaka, Japan. She's not here today. How about from Costa Rica? She's not here today also. How about Rio de Janeiro? Rio de Janeiro, where are you? Wave hi, wave hi. Rio de Janeiro, Jefferson from Rio de Janeiro, Brazil attends Marshall High School. Tom Labange, note that. You're at Marshall High. You've got to know Tom Labange. There he is, Tom Labange. He's the official alumni cheerleader for Marshall High. And also Cargill Scholar, one of the several corporations providing AFS scholarships. We also have, from our sister city, Nagoya, Japan. Are they here? Akina Six, she also attends Marshall High. And also here today, a student, Karn from Bangkok, Thailand. Is Karn here? Okay, there you are, from Bangkok, Thailand, who's attending Redondo Union High School. And the YES Program, Youth Exchange and Study, is a program founded by the United States Department of State, established in 2002, provides scholarships for high school students from countries with significant Muslim populations to spend up to one academic year in the United States. The program is vital to expanding communication between the people of the United States and partner countries in the interest of promoting mutual understanding and respect. AFS handles their school and housing needs for the Department of State during their stay. This year, Los Angeles is hosting three AFS YES students. Omar from Riyadh, Saudi Arabia. Saudi Arabia. A member, watch out, of the wrestling team of Redondo Union High School. You're a wrestler?
Yeah.
All right, go wrestle Tom Labange on the floor. We also have, from Turkey, performing arts magnet at Hollywood High School, Goons. You are from Turkey. And Zilmen, born in our sister city, Jakarta. Are they here? There you are. Zilmen from Jakarta, Indonesia, attends Dorsey High School in the Math and Science Accelerated Placement Program, member of their Academic Decathlon Team that captured the most improved team trophy and placed third behind Grotta Hills High School. And their motto, I love their motto, "Walk together, talk together, oh ye people of the earth, then and only then shall we have peace." You like that, Janice? Walk together, talk together, oh ye people of the earth, then and only shall we have peace. So we want to thank you for joining us. We're going to go in the back and take some photos. We've got some city resolutions, acknowledgements for you, and, Mr. President, back to you. Thank you. Round of applause.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine. We are now at public comment. I'd like to ask the following individuals to come to the podium. Liz Chavez, followed by Alberto Totoa, Sarah Nolan, and Maribel. Liz Chavez?
Good morning, City Council. My name is Liz Chavez. On June 13, 2007, the one-year anniversary date of the South Central Farmers' eviction of farm, of, from the South Central Farm, I come from, I come before the City Council on behalf of the residents of South Central, Los Angeles, and numerous other concerned citizens of this great city to petition you, our elected council members, to resolve to build a health city for all by adopting the resolution that I will now read and then submit for your consideration. And then I will ask one of your council members to present as Rule 16, the resolution. Whereas City Council regularly declares particular days as special days in the city of Los Angeles to honor people, entitles, or causes, whereas obesity, both childhood and adult, is a singular cause of an epidemic of illness, illnesses, and diseases that buffet our city, especially our protest, our poorest communities, whereas our city has spawned an organization that has consistently raised the community consciousness about diet and also provided organic food to counter proliferation of fast and junky food in our poorer neighborhoods, whereas such an organization was born out of poverty in South Central Los Angeles, and for the past four years has been educating Angelenos about the correlation between nutrition and health, whereas it has both educated and distributed healthy self-grown food despite political and physical obstacles, including violent eviction from land. It had farmed almost for 14 years, whereas despite having its crops plowed under rising from the roots, it has provided, it provides healthy fruit and vegetables to Angelenos at various farmers' markets every week. Therefore, let it be resolved that the City Council of the city of L.A. declare June 13 the Day of Eviction and Rebirth of the Public Service and Community Advocacy Organization of the South Central Farmers' Day.
Thank you very much.
Good morning, council members. My name is Alberto Totoa, and most of you know who I am, and I've been coming for the longest time that I, since I can remember, and we, as an organization, still continue to advocate eating organically, eating healthy, and making food, organic food, available to our communities, and yet, that has not, has happened in the 9th District. We continue our mission to providing, we sell at farmers' markets, we're providing organic food to our communities, we are still fulfilling our commitment that we have said in the beginning, South Central Farmers' Feeding Families, and to this day, we still fulfill this commitment. And, you know, it's time to step it up to the next level, pass this resolution. Last year was the saddest day in the history of L.A. We saw the loss of the largest urban farm in the nation, and nothing was done, land that fed families. And when you reach a point where you see that you are denying your kids' food, and kids are seeing the destruction that happened on June 13, that is the saddest thing that has impacted me and changed my life, and that day, I'm not, never going to forget it. I'm not going to never forget that day, because that day was a tragic day, and it should have even happened, because you're just denying kids' food, and that's wrong. That's a basic human need, that everybody needs food, and providing healthy, good food for our community, and we pride ourselves that, because we have managed to still, everything that has happened to us, we have managed to pick up ourselves and still continues an organization in providing the service for the community. And we've asked you to pass this resolution, it's fundamental, let it known that this day, you know, to declare the rebirth, because it was a rebirth. We are now reorganizing, we're rethinking everything, we're strategizing, and we hope to see you on board and make, make difference, make things happen for this community, and every community in the city of L.A., not just South Central. So, once again, we present ourselves, and I know that it's been a while since we've been here, but we've been working really hard to continue. We're also a nonprofit organization which seeks to promote urban agriculture, because it's fundamental for our communities to have a space where the kids can play and feel safe. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Sarah Nolan, Sarah Nolan, followed by Maribel, oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Madam President. I just felt compelled to respond to the speaker. He's right, we've seen him grow before our eyes, not only physically, but emotionally and socially, but I think it was just as significant, in this rebirth, I hope that in your maturity, that we understand that there's a body here that wants to learn how to work, with not only our legal limitations, but also with our capacity to perform and collaborate. So when we have our hands tied, we need to understand our fiscal responsibilities, our legal responsibilities, but we have a social and community responsibility, and that's what you continue to remind us of, and that's what I commit to you, that if you work with us, we will see a change. And thank you for your energy, and thank you for your spirit, and for your gallows of never giving up. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Reyes. I think you speak for all of us. I was glad you stood up and did that. Thank you very much. And Alberto, nice to see you again here in council chambers. Sarah, sorry. Commercial break.
My name is Sarah Nolan, I'm an active community member, and work at Holy Faith in Inglewood. I come as a supporter of the South Central Farm, and just wanting to say, as what was just mentioned, how we recognize that politics sometimes make it difficult to make different decisions, and politics get in the way of certain activities that are really beneficial for our community, but as the South Central Farmers' Organization and supporters, we really want to rise, be like above this, and above the constraints that, like, politics can have, and so we offer ourselves here in a sense today, saying that we are continuing to work no matter what, no matter who is going to come beside us or not, but we thank you for listening and the encouragement that was given today, and also want to let you know that we are working in our communities for access to healthy food and for empowerment and education about health to our communities.
Thank you very much.
Pass the resolution that was presented today as a symbolic gesture of the work that the farmers are doing.
Thank you. Maribel, followed by Linda Perla Avila, Sochi Luhan, and Mary Sederholm.
Good morning, City Council members. I just want to share with you some statistics that I found very important to our community. Adult obesity in Los Angeles has increased from 14% to 21% between 1997 and 2005, and the prevalence of childhood overweight increase unchecked among fifth, seventh, and ninth graders in Los Angeles. Public schools, rising from 18 in 1999 to 22% in 2003. City Council members, our communities, South Central Farmers, are working for the, are working for our community. We're trying to improve the eating habits of our community, especially around South Central, where access to fresh produce, none. We have more access to liquor stores than fresh or markets that where we could take our, even a safety environment for our kids. We no longer have the South Central Farm where our children were saved and could, and could have this paradise where they could just, and families get together. We no longer have that. City Council members, I ask you to adopt the resolution. We need to work together, and we could start this by, by coming down to the vigil tonight. We have a vigil at the South Central Farm. It's going to start at 6:00, 6:30 to 8:30, and it's a podluck, where we're going to have different activities for the community. Once again, City Council members, we are an organization that is seeking to promote the bonds between family and communities. We want to work together. We, I ask you to come out, and we need to find a ways to work together. Thank you.
Thank you. Linda Avila?
Thank you.
Excuse me. Good morning, council members. I'm Linda Piero Avila. And I'm with the Green Party. And we are definitely in support of the work that the South Central Farmers are doing. And I also want to lend my voice to support and passage of this resolution. By adopting this resolution, you can move the city's public policy agenda towards a conscious embrace of urban agriculture as a viable and necessary condition to improve health, education, economic development, and urban planning in this great city. The commitment of the South Central Farmers should be publicly memorialized by the City Council of Los Angeles by declaring this day, June 13th, South Central Farmers' Day in honor of the community's resiliency, resourcefulness, and self-determination, which made it possible, this rebirth and regeneration of the South Central Farmers as a vital public service and community advocacy organization that will continue to transform the lives of the city's residents and inspire similar acts of courage and robust civic participation throughout the Los Angeles metropolitan area and at a state, national, and international level. And I just want to also mention that once a month, the South Central Farm Health and Education Fund puts on a monthly tiangis, or street fair, adjacent to the land that was the farm. And during these, these marketplace festivals, tiangis, various community-based organizations participate, artisans and local merchants, as well as the farmers themselves bringing the food that they are now farming at another location into South Central to make it accessible to the residents there. So again, I urge council members to move this item and adopt this resolution. This issue remains in the consciousness of Angelenos and, and many people throughout the country as the urban farming movement gains awareness. Adopting this resolution is a way to honor the work of the South Central Farmers and their contribution to this movement. Thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. And if I could ask staff and others that are here in the council chambers, that noise level's gotten a little high here. If we could please ask, if you have conversations, to please exit the room. Thank you. Ms. Luhan?
Thank you. My name is Sochi Luhan. A few things I'd like to press for the motion to pass that resolution. Number one, the city would show it's taking a step in the right direction to try to mend things on a different plane. Number two, after you pass this resolution, it would be a good gesture to come out to the tiangis, to come out to the vigil that we're having tonight and to come maybe every Sunday, every first Sunday of the month, to make your presence known in the community so that people can see that the council members do truly care about what happens. I know there are many, many, many other pressing issues that you have, that you have to deal with. But this is also something that is truly important. The South Central Farmers' Health and Education Fund is now a nonprofit organization which is committed to helping families get access to healthy produce. And with that, I'm going to stop so you can allow other people to speak during public testimony. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Mary Sederholm, followed by Melrose Larry Green, followed by Oscar Johnson. Again, if we could ask all staff, please, to limit their conversations. Shh.
Hi, my name is Mary Sederholm. I've been here once before. And I run a nonprofit called L.A. Surf Bus. This came on as an outgrowth of the company I own, which is Surf Academy. We're the largest surf school in the United States. I started this with just a cardboard sign in the sand. Okay? Now, here's the deal. I didn't tell you that I'm a former U.S. surfing champion. I didn't tell you I'm on the Walk of Fame the last time I was here. I didn't tell you I've ridden 15-foot waves. That, I'm in the future, not in the past. Okay? But I take some of that same moxie into what I'm doing now. I get, I have right now over 60 parks from the toughest neighborhoods in L.A. signed up for my inner-city program. They come down one day a week. They're guaranteed one day a week. And it has to continue for eight weeks for that one day a week to help these kids become ocean-safe. The kids who drown the most, the statistics show, the kids who drowned are the urban kids. And I have a moral obligation to do something about that as the largest surf school in the United States. And as a mother of five. And as someone who has been present when kids have drowned up the beach. It just tears your heart out. And it doesn't need to happen. So I need your help. I personally have carried this so far and I can't carry it anymore. I need collaboration. I absolutely need collaboration. This cannot succeed. I let this program out the gate this year. I kept a lid on it last year to 20 parks. And I wanted to see what would happen if I stood back and I let these kids come forward. 60 parks plus have come forward. Will you please say yes to this? And when we approach you for vouchers for buses, I'm not asking for money. I am not asking for money. I'm asking for collaboration to help me with buses. Okay? And I don't understand no. I'll just keep working with you. So I thank you.
Thank you. I think Mr. Labonge would like to talk to you very much. Thank you, Mr. Labonge. Melrose Larry Green, followed by Oscar Johnson.
Good morning. I'm not a surfer, but I love surfing music. I'm Melrose Larry Green. The reason why I'm here this morning, I saw the headline in the paper this morning. And it's disgusting what the media is doing, sensationalizing the personal life of our beloved mayor, Antonio Villarogosa. I consider the mayor, no offense to all 15 here around here, probably the hardest-working guy or gal in politics in this country. For me, to actually work for a Democrat is unheard of. But I love him so much that I campaign hard for him. And I remember the last night, we've been up for 36 hours. We were over at Pink's on La Brea. And I remember the mayor was rounding up his family and he said, put his arm around his son. And he said, "Come on, son, let's go." Well, this son is off to Princeton in a few months. That's Antonio Villarogosa Jr., who used to be 12-years-old when I first lost for mayor. And Janice's older brother beat me. And he was 16 when Antonio beat me. And maybe when he's 20, I'll win. Who knows? But I doubt it. But I do want to say that it's irrelevant. The voters don't care about the personal life or the private life, if there is one, of Antonio Villarogosa. He works about 18 hours a day. But what's important is what the mayor's done to revitalize Hollywood, El Sereno, Watts, where I live, in the Willoughby area, Willoughby and Las Palmas. And I like to see Barnes &amp; Nobles in Watts and Starbucks in Pacoima and Gelson's in Pico Union. And that's happening under Mayor Villarogosa. And shame on the media. You're not going to sell papers. Nobody cares. This is his personal business. And I'm proud to call the mayor my friend. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Melrose Larry Green. Oscar Johnson? Mr. Johnson?
Good morning, council members. My name is Oscar, Oscar Johnson. I'm a proactive and community law stance for the homeless. I'm speaking out about corruption in politics, racism in politics. I see how Skid Row is, how African-Americans are treated on Skid Row with no dignity. And you have other Caucasian Americans just in worse condition as they are economically. But you have given them a better stable condition than they, than they have been. And I can see how the government, or the city of Los Angeles, our mayor, our district attorney, have put our profit over health. Skid Row is a very unsanitary environment to be in. They urinate and they have waste and all that, and toxic air, environment. We have to breathe all of that stuff. And it's, and it's really taken effect on our health. And something should be did about it. In L.A., it's, it's, it's decaying faster and faster. If there was an African-American male Los Angeles, they would remove him. Because Los Angeles is very neglected. And, and Los Angeles is going down further and further. We have liquor stores all over Los Angeles. We have a place they call the Liquor Bank on Stalker in Crenshaw. And it, and it's too much liquor for, for a community that can't handle liquor. Saying we will have our freedom. We can't handle our freedom. And we have no one over us to supervise us in a proper way that is responsible for anything about our community. Seems like we don't have any connection with our representatives in office, but with the right connection to try to separate confusion from clarity. But we have the wrong connection with our, with our political people that immigrants, immigrants come to, over to this country illegally. Seems like you're just bringing people over here to extend your racket and, and corruption. You're not bringing anything over here morally or decently. You're bringing something over here to extend the racket and the oppression that's going on morally against the African-American community though. And we see how you keep bringing kids up here talking about learning something in the city chamber. You take them out to farmlands with their livestock.
Thank, thank you very much. Nice to see you, Mr. Johnson. Thank you very much. Again, this is my third reminder to staff and others. The noise level is really loud up here. So please, take your conversations outside. We're going to go to the Valley Office. Miriam Fogler?
Yes, item number 12. Good morning. You've let me have a right to speak on number, item number 12, even though it would have been nice, courteous of you. The CRA should be taken over by the city. This is a thing that's been going on since, since after World War II. We used eminent domain, power of eminent domain to confiscate people's property without justification for, you know, for progress, you call, for freeways and bus, busways and subways. It's got to be taken over. Because what you're doing is you're letting the developers use public money, public taxpayers' money, public property taxes, money that's being allocated to our police and fire department to be used for building big Taj Mahals. In the meantime, the people who are trying to make affordable housing here in the city, you're making it harder for the poor and the middle class. What you're doing is you're making it hard for the poor especially. Because you're making the rent score way up under this CRA. Because they have to, when they build it, it's under union. And the price of the, of the medium unit is much more than what you build with the private developer who builds a new apartment or a condo. And under, because under the CRA, the property is much more inflated. Because you want to make as much money and you want to make as much money on the property taxes to get the CRA more, 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 more. And it's taking over everything. This is the one that's creating the system of communism. And it's nationwide and has to be stopped. This 12 should have been voted down. Community redevelopment laws need to be, need to be disbanded and destroyed. It's not suitable for the United States of America. It's unconstitutional. The Supreme Court is unconstitutional to vote in favor of eminent domain to be used against the law-abiding citizens. The normal course of action is to buy people's property and market value. The government wants to use people's property, whatever they can get it to market value. They don't have to go and use eminent domain.
Thank you very much, Ms. Fogler. Appreciate it. Here we have Arnold Sachs, followed by Michael Hunt, followed by Matt Dowd.
Good morning, council members. Thank you very much. I've been before the councils the last several weeks regarding the MTA and the innumerable, innumerable construction authorities. Just recently, according to the Daily Breeze, which is a Toyness paper, on June 5th, Ted Lieu's bill to build the Green Line or to authorize the Green Line Construction Authority was turned down by the state legislature. Yes, sir. But in the last Transportation Committee meeting, I brought to your attention that Southern, the South Bay Council city is a, South Bay City Council of the government had looked to enter onto the Green Line Board and was told that since the Green Line runs through the city of L.A., they weren't going to have representation on that. My point being that last week, oh, I'm sorry. I can't remember your name. Councilman Garcetti tried to explain that the construction authorities are for multi-jurisdictional use or to cover multi-jurisdictional boundaries. Since the Gold Line Extension, the East Side Gold Line Extension was, is within the city of L.A., there's no construction authority. Now, since the Green Line construction that's planned to go to the airport is within the city of L.A., why is a construction authority necessary within the city of L.A.? The inconsistencies in the manner that MTA runs its program is mind-boggling. Please, somebody answer the questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Sachs. Mr. Hunt?
We like to welcome the Outlaws back on the record. Evans called for a city attorney removal of Rocky Del Gil. We do too. He's got you guys in a lot of trouble. Now they're talking about segregation on Venice Boardwalk. The blacks have to go down to one end or, or either the other, which is not acceptable. Number two, the Paris Hilton issue. She needs to be in an alcohol rehabilitation, not in jail. Let me comment on that. Alcohol rehabilitation at the morgues. That's another mistake by Rocky Del Gil. And here's what's going to happen at the conference settlement is we're going to reject the incline of the 4215. Eric Garcetti's supposed to walk the bill through regarding the 4215 release. It's not acceptable. They sold contracts that said inextricably intertwined, 1,300 of them. They need to honor those contracts or else they will be in contract litigation, which comes back to City Hall, which will then, you guys have 1,300 lawsuits for lifetime permits that you guys sold, which is fraud, which is going through the Second Circuit now. So just a little warning, Rocky needs to go. City Council needs to step up and follow what's going on. Bill Rosenthal, you need to join us in the meetings. Mike Bonning is not acceptable. Neither is Mike Nagel. You need to participate and return the boardwalk back too. It's, it's normal what Abby Kennedy donated it for. That's the only thing that's acceptable through the Outlaws. There is no segregation. There is no gay section. There is no segregation. There is no gay section. There is no lesbian section. There is no handicap section. If you're going to section off the boardwalk, you have to do be fair to everybody. So I just want to let you guys know so you guys won't get a second lawsuit on your desk.
Mr. Rosendale, I'm sorry, we did not see during the public comment, you wanted to make something based on Arnold Sacks' comments?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Appreciate that. It's just about the Green Line. The Green Line is not dead. The Green Line will resurrect itself. It's a no-brainer. It belongs in the airport and also needs to be a coastal relief all the way down the coast. There's nothing west of the 405. It's all gridlock. It's a no-brainer. We're going to come up with the funds for the first plug to the airport. My God, every metropolitan airport in the world has a light rail going into it, but LA, we're going to make that happen. I just want Mr. Sacks to know, we haven't given up at this level. We're going forward with the project. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you very much. We'll have Mr. Dowd, followed by Candido, followed by Merv Evans and Samuel Sanchez.
Thank you very much. It's Matt Dowd. The Outlaws are back, Channel 35. Just want to give my shout-outs like Janice Hahn did to Candido Maras' family and friends. We'll be showing up to see them in a couple of months' time. They're all waiting for us to come back on Channel 35. We're here. All the Venice Beach people watching what's going on. I've got to warn you, the T-shirt campaign's coming back because we're stuck on this T-shirt thing again, Bill Rosendale. That's why we need Tom Le Bonj. You know, we can work this out, but you've got to talk to us. You actually got to follow through with, you know, let's walk the beach. We'll show you what's going on. Something else, if you're going to go to the South Central Farmers Vigil tonight, show up with a candle. Don't be bringing flashlights at 11:00 AM, shining them all over the place. Right? City Attorney, not this one, whichever one. What are you doing with Paris Hilton? It's ridiculous. The money they're wasting, you know, it's just, you know, you're taking the spotlight away from the Outlaws. So put Paris Hilton back in her home with a metal detector or whatever they put on them, a GPS thing, and we can all find where she goes and then we can all paparazzi her everywhere. Mr. Zine, good to see you on the Mayor Sam Bloggs spot in the leather outfit.
Madam President, the Speaker should be directing his comments to the council as a whole.
Thank you, Mr. City Attorney.
He's a big boy. We've seen him in the picture. No, I'm just having a little fun. We want to get somebody into this settlement. The judge ordered a settlement on the Venice thing. He said it's not, you know, the other thing's no good. So, yeah, just, Bill, get someone over there.
Thank you very much. Candido?
Thank you, Madam President. Council members, I would like to thank the South Central Farmers because I've been here each and every day. When you came before this council and you struggled and you tried to make a difference. And to you, Alberto, one day you're going to sit over there where Mr. Reyes is and you're going to serve your people with dignity and integrity the way he has. So I want personally in front of everybody, give you and the South Central, never lose sight of who you're here to represent, the people that you started with. So don't forget that. Newspaper DWP, folks, you know, hopefully we'll clear all this up, but I still stand with the 99.99% of the hard-working DWP workers who are going to be working very hard this summer to make sure our homes are air-conditioned and that our water is delivered. Last Wednesday, I couldn't make it. And once again, I'm here to stand up for the police. I know some people don't like that, but I was watching television. I was hoping that I would see Mr. Zine. You made a motion to ask that Mr. Carter, Mr. Gray, and Mr. Egan, those who were responsible or in charge of the MacArthur Park melee, they weren't here. And again, Mr. Braden, Mr. Hillerman, and Mr. McDonald, they were fantastic. Those guys were fantastic. But if we're going to find the truth, if we're going to seek the truth, and it's, you know, the public should know that you as an officer, after what, 31 years?
Madam President, the Speaker should direct his comments to the council as a whole.
And Mr. Parks, we're the ones that were asking, former police officers were asking, let's get the truth out this time because you heard the public. The public is giving you a warning. They're saying, we're not going to take this anymore. And I thank you for bringing that up. Ms. Hahn, you told Mr. Braden, I'm not happy with your answers. I appreciate that. Thank you very much. We have to get the truth. And I know that one day soon, and I know the task force is supposed to be doing the heavy lifting, but you have to bring those three individuals back. If we're going to get the truth out, we need them here. Thank you, Mr. President, Councilman. Madam President?
Thank you, Candido. Merv Evans, followed by Samuel Sanchez.
Hello, my name is Mervan Evans, and I'm very delighted to be here today. And I'm strongly encouraging this council to ask the State Bar to review Mr. Delgado's recent actions. I believe attacks on the sheriff are foolish and unprofessional conduct. I personally think you ought to dismiss Mr. Delgado ASAP. Ask State Bar to suspend his bar card. Paris Hilton, how many families would need special help, need mental health services? Here's a young lady who comes from one of the richest families in the country, yet Delgado is using her comparable to what Mr. Nifong did in the Duke case. He's using Ms. Hilton as a political tool for his own advantage. I have asked the California Sheriff's Association to urge the State Bar, and I've also sent my own State Bar complaint in on Delgado. I really believe that we have to do more. Imagine a situation in which Ms. Paris Hilton suddenly is allowed to step outside of the court-ordered federally mandated program the sheriff has for early release. And then the next judge says, oh, you black, we're going to take you out of the federal plan too. Oh, you're Mexican. We'll take you out of the plan also. She's opening a door in which some judges in this town who don't like black and who don't like brown people will suddenly say, you're going to do the full term. You're going to do the full thing. No early release for you. It creates a disparity in the issue of justice. This council can't sit back while its city attorney is conducting a campaign of foolishness. You have a responsibility to get rid of Rocky Delgado. You might even put in Ted Weiss as a temporary. All right? You really need to move the agenda. Here, enclosed are copies of the letter to the State Sheriff's Association.
Our next speaker is Samuel Sanchez.
Hello. Mr. City Attorney, as far as I know, council rule, I think it's 12, says that I am allowed to address individual council members, not the whole thing as a whole. So, Ms. Perry, every time I hear your name...
In response to a question, sir, in response to a question, you can respond to the council member.
Can you stop this? Are you responding? Okay. Well, anyway...
Go ahead.
It's confusing to me why a lot of you seem to take trips halfway around the world to study greening in other zones when, right here in your own city, you allowed the largest urban farm in the country to be destroyed. I mean, you spend this money to travel around and try to study the different techniques and what people are doing wrong, what people are doing right, although that's not really what you're talking about. I'd like to echo what the lady in Van Nuys was talking about, about the CRA and how their gentrification and their corruption, along with you guys and your partnership with them, has allowed things like this to happen. So this whole charade of wanting to green LA is all bull. And I can't address individual council members. Ms. Perry, you have failed South Central. You have failed the green movement in general and you should be...
Sir, the city attorney, all remarks shall be addressed to the council as a whole. Sir, we'd appreciate if you would not damage city property. That closes public comment. Madam Clerk, next item on the agenda, please.
Next item is item number 11, and that's the confirmation of a city official. It's the confirmation of Mr. Ernesto Cardenas to the Board of Public Works Commissioners.
Good afternoon. Good afternoon, council members.
Would you like to make an opening statement?
Sure. First of all, I'd just like everybody to know I'd be honored to serve on the Public Works Commission. It's the work that it does for the city of Los Angeles is very vital to keeping this city going. The infrastructure that Public Works is in charge of is what keeps this city going and everything in the background. The things that the city council does helps that, but the five bureaus are very vital to what is happening in the city. And I believe that my expertise or my experience as an engineer and my years of experience as a project management and facilities management would go a long way to round out the existing board and bring some new ideas to how they're working along.
Thank you very much. I'd like to acknowledge Mr. Rosendale, the Chair of that committee.
Thank you, Madam President. Good morning.
Good morning.
I'm very happy you're stepping up to the plate. And in our conversations, we've had several, one before, one-on-one in the office, and one before the committee. There were three things I threw out to you. One was point-of-sale, which is that when a home is being sold, the sidewalks get worked on. The second had to do with sewers, which we need to get a good analysis of our sewers. And the third was a potential bond measure for '08, where we finally do our streets. I mean, people don't understand that we've deferred, deferred, deferred. And when they get on the list to have their street done, there are 63 years of streets behind you. And then we're fighting for crumbs as how to do things. So obviously, to get our streets in the city in shape is important. Getting our sidewalks, which take 83 years at this point, is totally insane. And if we don't take a hard look at our sewers, we'll be in the same boat that San Diego was before they put in a nice local strategy to replace them. I'd like your thoughts on those three big issues.
Well, the one issue I believe you, I wasn't aware of the resolution of last week's committee on what happened with the...
Point-of-sale is still a discussion. What we're doing, which is terrific, Bill Robertson's a fantastic guy, is bringing groups of community people together, realtors together, all of the community aspects that need to work with this so there's no division or contentions among the groups. And that is an ongoing process. When you be sitting as a commissioner, it will be coming through your leadership role as well. We're in the early stages of making that happen. The goal is to get a resolution and an ordinance by the city that goes into place. We don't have to go to the ballot for that and get that issue resolved, but we're moving along with it.
Well, I understand the point-of-sale is still a little bit away, but I think it's a good first step. I got a copy of the information that your office sent me, and I was looking at that. And I've got a couple of ideas that I want to bring to the board in terms of how we could kind of massage it around a little bit. The other item that we discussed was the sanitation issue. And as everyone knows, with all the new houses that are being built in the city of Los Angeles, there's going to be a point where we have to seriously take a look at our sanitation system and see what, at what point our capacity is going to be reached. And we need to take steps now to investigate, to see what we can do to make sure that it doesn't get into a major problem because everybody knows as soon as that happens, it's not a good thing at all. So I'm very interested in looking into the sanitation part as well. The third item that we discussed was, sorry...
Well, one was the sidewalks, which is point-of-sale. The other is a bond measure to get the streets done.
Yeah. The bond measure, that, again, that one's going to be a little ways away, but what we need to do right now at Public Works is to see how, and we discussed this earlier, how everybody notices that one street gets done and the street right around it doesn't get done, or you get two on the sides and one in the middle that doesn't. We need to look at it as a whole. All the departments need to look together and work together to make sure that, so that when we get these complaints from the residents saying, you know, why don't you guys work together? And it's a good point. We, all the departments do need to work together to make sure that we utilize our resources. I mean, once you get out there and you do two streets and you miss one, the one in between, it doesn't make sense. We need to utilize our resources to get all three of them done, just as an example, so that we leave the situation better than we found it instead of leaving a hole in the middle. So that's one of the things I plan on working on as well.
Share with my colleagues a little of your background and experiences and other walks of life and why that makes you, in my opinion, eminently qualified to be a commissioner.
Well, as, thank you. I got my degree in mechanical engineering from UC Santa Barbara, and I've been able to utilize my degree for the past 20 years in the private industry. And for the last 15 years, I've been working in private industry as a project manager to do just that, project manage large projects from start to finish, utilizing the architects, the consultants, and the contractors to make sure that the client or our company gets their money's worth out of it. And I think I can bring those resources to the city to make sure that the city gets its money's worth out of any contracts or designs that we do in the city realm.
Thank you very much. I'm looking forward to your leadership on the commission. Again, congratulations for stepping forward. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Councilman.
Mr. Zine?
Good morning.
Good morning.
Your name sounds familiar.
Yeah, a large family.
A large family. I noticed from your background, you've been on the Planning Commission.
Yes, sir.
A master's degree, well-qualified for this position. One thing that I would bring your attention, when we talk about street paving, which in the San Fernando Valley is a huge, huge issue.
I live in the San Fernando Valley.
So, you know, street paving, trim the trees, fix the sidewalks, they're not asking for a whole lot, but those are major issues out there. When they're applying the formula for street paving, what they need to include is the width of the street. The valley has very wide streets, but the way that I understand they do it is by the length of the street. So, for example, you take Sepulveda Boulevard, you take a residential street or a business street in some other area, you've got the length. But there need to include in the formula the width because what we're doing is not getting our share of the street paving because of the formula, since we have wider streets in other parts of the city. So a long time ago, I learned that their formula is to take the length and not include the width, which would give us more streets paved because obviously it takes more asphalt when it's a wider than long. So anyway, I'd just bring that to your attention when you're on the commission, if you could have someone explore that and say, how do we appropriate this when we're doing street paving? For example, Wilshire Boulevard is a very wide street, but we've got many, many wide streets in the valley that go unpaved. But if they could modify that formula to include not only the length but the width, we may be able to satisfy some of the demands of the people that say our streets haven't been paved in many, many years. Mr. Rosendale talked about it, but I think one of the problems is the formula that they use doesn't really apply it equally and fairly when you're looking at the width of many of the roads that we have within the San Fernando Valley.
I definitely wasn't aware of that, but I'll definitely look into it.
Yeah, I found that I'd do in some research to say, well, why don't we get as many streets paved? Well, because of the formula that they use. And I think that that formula needs to be modified to include both the length and the width. With that, I know that you have a love for government, a love for people, a love for getting things done. So you could join a commission that has Cynthia Weir as the president of the commission, who's very aggressive, very involved, and very responsive to our demands. So you join the great commission and wish you well on that.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Mr. Reyes?
Thank you, Madam President. Welcome, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you.
In terms of our role as council in the process of Public Works, can you speak to how you see us, given your role as a commissioner, and how we can collaborate together? Can you give us a sense of how you see the council as a body and as individuals when we have our priorities in our district, which might not always match with someone else's, whether it be another commissioner or maybe even the mayor? Can you speak to that for a second? Please, hold my time.
Okay. I see that as, with the Public Works Commission, it's a five-member body, and we represent the entire city. And I see the city council as our eyes and ears out there. You have your staff, you have your field people out there as well, letting us know what the issues are in the city. So I would see the council's input as very vital to what we need to do to represent, you know, our constituents, your constituents, the entire city of Los Angeles. So I look forward to working with the different city council members to make sure that they can let us know on the board as to what your number-one priority is, what your number-two priority is, so that we can make sure that we're in sync with what we're doing with the city. You know, ultimately, we're working with the city funds here, and there are your city funds, there are my city funds, there are constituent city funds, to make sure that they're utilized and we get the best bang for the buck out of whatever we do with our Public Works dollars.
Appreciate that answer. Because I know it's a balancing act. Politics is an art, and how we deal with personalities and different agendas is always something that we maneuver in these sometimes turbulent waters. But there is a very obvious condition in the city where the people are most crowded tend to be where the people are the poorest.
Yes.
That tends to be where the sidewalks, the trees, the streets get more used, more rundown. But our maintenance schedules behave as if we're all on the same playing field. Can you address that notion for me?
Well, that's what I would like to bring on the council, my experience as, you know, a person from the valley who sees this on a daily basis, when I drive to work, when I go home from work, when I take my kids to school, and when I, you know, when I go to the market. All of those experiences, I look forward to bringing to the board to make sure that they can understand, well, sure, that's great for that part of the city or that's great for that part of the city, but, you know, where I live, where I come from, there's these issues, and this is how I see them. So I plan on bringing not only my experience, but my 45 years of being on this planet to what, to how I see it. I think we can best serve everybody. So I don't know if that answers your questions directly, but I just want to bring my perspective, I guess, to the board to make sure that we're treating everybody fairly and understanding that some sidewalks get walked on more than others.
Absolutely. And I've been a staff person for 10 years, now council member for six. And what I always try to do is understand how the discretion and how we apply formulas are actually implemented. Like, who actually tells the work rules? This is the area you clean, and this is the area you don't. This is the area you clean more often, and this is the one you don't. So how we get to that point, I think, is going to be critical. Now, whether I'm shitting myself in the foot by raising that issue, I'm not sure, but the fact is, as more of us become educated in terms of those who come from these neighborhoods, at least we can bring forward those kinds of perspectives that can ease this pressure and tension that we feel when we have our riots, when we have the blowups, when we have these kinds of civil disobedience that speaks to how whole communities are really hurting. And for others, it's irrelevant because it's not part of the reality, but for a lot of us, it's what we endure. So I understand, and I'll say it, yes, you're Tony Cardenas' brother, but I'm going to vote for you because of the type of analysis you bring, what you shared with us today. I hope, working with you, we can actually see some changes that these communities have yet to see. I look forward to working with you.
Thank you. And to answer your question, I'm not shy of working with formulas, so that's not a problem at all.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Our next speaker is Ms. Grue.
Thank you. I just wanted to stand as well in support of your appointment. And I know you've been a planning commissioner before, and so your knowledge base, as well as the city works, is really, I think, fabulous. And you've heard from all of us, the most important thing to us is, from our constituencies, is things that happen in Public Works and the responsiveness and the transparency. Even last night, when I was in Studio City, you know, it was about the repaving of Coldwater Canyon and where were we and all the questions related to that. And most of the questions were related to the delivery... And most of the questions were related to the delivery of services. So, this is such a critical position that you're going into, and I know you understand the importance of that, in some ways, the complexity and the simplicity, which is just getting the job done. So, I wanted to stand up in support of you and look forward to working with you in our communities and our neighborhoods. It is a very important issue to all of us and ways in which we can do things differently, even as we look through this last year's budget, and how we prioritize streets and looking at those that are in the most need, and looking at the sidewalk repair and how the 50/50 program works, how we can make it even work better. We've been looking at a variety of ways in which to do that, but you all are dealing with it every single day.
Yes, ma'am.
So, your feedback as to legislative policies that need to change, looking at contractual issues, there's a lot of things that go through the Public Works Commission, ensuring that those particular contracts that we have are abiding by the rules of the city, ensuring that living wage and with their subcontractors. So, lots of things to do. I know you're excited about the position, just wanted to stand up and say congratulations.
Thank you for your support.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Gruel. And before we take the vote, another city attorney wants to make a statement, but let me congratulate you as well. It's a great, great nomination from one commission to another, and one in which we really look forward to working closely with you, especially on a lot of the environmental issues we've been coordinating on Public Works with. But I want to thank the mayor because in elevating you to this position, he does a service to this entire city as well as to the departments that you will be working very closely with. So, congratulations.
Thank you.
And you can count on my full support. So, with that, Mr. City Attorney?
Thank you, Madam President. Upon our advice, Mr. Cardenas has recused himself to avoid any appearance of conflict.
Thank you very much. So, with that, let's go ahead and make this official. Please open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 eyes.
Congratulations. A round of applause for our new commissioner. And without objection, we'll send that forth with to the mayor. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 15, and that was called special by Councilmember Perry.
Councilmember Perry, we have item number 15 before us. Ms. Perry, if you'd like to, item number 15 is before us.
There was a request for a continuance on this until next Tuesday, but I understand it might get kicked over anyway, but either way, we can get a continuance.
Let's move it formally then, might as well. That would be one week till, or next Tuesday, excuse me, the 19th. Is there any objection to continuing item 15 to the 19th? If not, so ordered. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 23, and that was called special by Councilmember Zine.
Mr. Zine, we have item number 23 before us now, on the feasibility of implementing electronic payment card process as an alternative to direct deposit on payroll check processes.
You call me up?
I'm just speaking to fill the time.
Oh, thank you, thank you, thank you. I just wanted to bring this to the attention, that there are part-time employees, there are other employees that don't have bank accounts, and they go to these check-cashing locations to cash the city check, and there's a fee for that. And what we're trying to do is no cost to the employees to provide this service. They're going to do an RFP on it. It'll save the city money from 41 cents a check to about 14 cents with this particular process. So, there's no cost to the employee. It provides them an opportunity to get those checks, our part-time, our employees that don't have a bank account for whatever reason. This avoids the necessity to go to a check-cashing where there's a percentage of that check paid to the check-cashing facility. So, this assists our employees, assists our controller's office, and it saves money for the city of Los Angeles. So, we would request that the city attorney, other entities follow through with this, and then it'll come back once the RFP goes out, and we can come up with a vendor that can provide this service. We learned of this through the Personnel Committee to provide this service to our employees. Because as you know, that if you don't have a bank account and you get a check, you have to cash it, those check-cashing places charge to cash that check. This will avoid that for our employees. So, we request an aye vote on this. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine. Seeing no other speakers in the queue from the council, Madam Clerk, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 eyes.
That is approved. Next item is item number 28. Mr. Wesson?
Mr. President and members, you know, I've said this before, and I will say it, I will say it again today, that the winds in this country blow from the west to the east. Whatever we do in Los Angeles, whatever we do in California, the whole world watches. So, it is with pride that this city took the lead in creating a green initiative. And what I bring for you, before you today, is just an added component, which I think is an excellent idea, where we would look at retrofitting existing city businesses and also having a job creation component to help residents in need of work. And I really wish I could stand before this council and say that that was my idea, but it really wasn't. And I want to give credit to the individuals that deserve that credit. So, please acknowledge the Apollo Alliance and Scope Agenda. Give yourselves a round of applause. This was your idea and your baby, and I'm just honored that you came to me and asked me to carry the ball on this one. With that said, Mr. President, I think we have individuals from the public that want to testify on this item, and so I'd like to afford them the opportunity right now. And again, I think this was an excellent idea, and what this shows is the partnership between elected officials and the community, how we can create and nurture and make positive things occur when we work together. I'm very proud to work with you on this issue, very, very proud. And I have to give special thanks to my dear friend, Anthony Thigpen, and all of the work that he's done with... So many people view Anthony as this brilliant political strategist, and they're right because he is, but he is also a community activist, well-grounded, and he tries to do the best that he can to deliver people the things that they want, they need, and they expect. And I'm glad to partner with you in this endeavor. In fact, next time you have a good idea, come let me know as well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Wesson. And with that, we'll turn to our public speaker cards. Our first one is Robert Oidi from International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, and then Jason Elias will be next.
Good morning. My name's Bob Oidi. I represent 8,000 members, the International Brotherhood of Electrical Workers, Local 11, here in Los Angeles, and we're proud to support this motion, and we stand behind this 100%. Our members and their families are community stakeholders. They want a clean environment and a healthy city. They want quality jobs for low-income people. And there are great opportunities right now for the city in solar power and renewable energy, and this motion will put our city on the path to sustainable and prosperous future. It's the right thing to do, so again, thank you for your support, and we hope we can count on your leadership in this. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Jason Elias is our next speaker.
All right. Thank you, Mr. President. I come, Jason Elias from SEIU Local 721. We are not only the city's refuse collection truck operators, traffic officers, and public safety officers, but also city landscapers, the people's gardeners, irrigation specialists, and building maintainers. We are proud to serve LA, and we have buttons and stickers to prove it. So, I'm going to give this to our steward on city council, Eric Garcetti, and I hope that these are distributed to city council folks. We are also a proud, thank you, Council President, all right. We are also a proud founding member of the Apollo Alliance, and we stand ready to lead the way. We are ready to help retrain current city workers for a sustainable future. Current workforce, 10,000 members of Local 721, stand poised to implement programs jointly developed by labor and management, like we've done to re-engineer work processes and sanitation, public work, street services, recreation of parks, general services, to name a few. We're also working with the Community College District's Regional Economic Development Initiative, are ready to create a green landscaping training program, which would help the city's gardening workforce to include amazing practices such as native landscaping, smart irrigation design and installation, and best integrated pest management practices. And we would love to do the same for building maintenance and other specialties in the city. Lastly, we want to be a part of a green, of a vision, of a green building program that uses recreation and parks facilities to be demonstration projects for LA to use as a model of what could be done in the private sector. So, lastly, we support this motion, and we hope that you do the same. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Elva Yanez. Elva Yanez, followed by Isela Gracian.
Thank you, honorable council members. My name is Elva Yanez. I'm the director of the Audubon Center at Debs Park, located in Highland Park, CD1. The center was one of the first green buildings to receive a platinum LEED certification from the U.S. Building Council when it first opened in 2003. Like I said, our center is located in Highland Park, and it was established to connect people to nature and inspire a new generation of environmental leaders from communities that traditionally had not been represented or served well by the environmental community. We take a whole communities approach to our efforts at the center, which is to work at the intersection of the cultures and communities that we serve, as well as their basic needs and the environmental issues that are relevant to their daily lives. Our involvement in the Apollo Alliance's partnership of labor, environmental, and community-based organizations is consistent with this approach. Our involvement in the alliance reflects a shared belief in the need to revitalize inner-city communities through job creation in green, clean industries. The creation of a sustainable union jobs in the green building industry is essential to this kind of revitalization. As a Latina and a resident of El Surino, this is a very exciting time to be working in the environmental community in LA. The potential for the center and for the alliance to provide leadership opportunities for communities of color on community revitalization through urban conservation and green building employment opportunities is really unprecedented. Just as the Audubon Center demonstrates that low-income communities of color can take an important leadership role in environmental movement and sustainability issues, the Apollo Alliance's green building proposal opens a unique opportunity to create a pipeline that connects our communities to a wide range of new jobs with important environmental benefits attached. The proposed energy audit is the first step towards a job creation program that provides a range of sustainability benefits, including reduction of carbon emissions, elimination of poverty, and well-paying jobs in the neediest communities. I urge you to support this motion. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Isela Gracian, followed by Shanaya Perry.
Good morning, everybody. I'm Isela Gracian with the East LA Community Corporation. For over 10 years, we've been working on the east side, Bull Heights, creating affordable housing for families, and we've been working with community residents on the issues of gentrification and ensuring that the investment that's coming into the community benefits the existing families that are there. And one of the things that those families need in order to be able to benefit from the investments coming into our neighborhood are good jobs, and that those investments also take into account the environment that our community is intersected by so many freeways, by limited open space, that the buildings that we have, and we can demonstrate how in urban communities where poor people of color live can have good jobs and have buildings that sustain the community in a variety of ways, one of them being the environmental issues of greening them. And our families need good jobs in order to be able to stay and afford the housing that they have and continue to thrive there, and they've been the families that have sustained these communities for a long time, when investors, when speculators were not looking at them as great communities. Our families were there and continue to be there, and they deserve to have the right to continue living there. Once these developments are completed, once this investment continues to flow into our communities, that they benefit from it, that these families are there to live it and play it, that their children are there to have it, and as the investment continues to grow in our cities, in our city, in our different neighborhoods where poor, low-income families of color live, that this initiative will help them with jobs and improving their overall environment, and we urge all the city council to support the Green Initiative motion in having jobs for our residents and making sure that LA is green and is a healthy city for all of our families that are living here. Thank you.
Shanaya Perry?
Good morning. My name is Shanaya Perry, and I'm a member and leader of Agenda, and I'm here today to just express a little detail of my life as growing up in LA. I went to Audubon Junior High, I graduated from Los Angeles High School, and I watched the city of LA on Crenshaw just deteriorate. And I think it's so wonderful that Herb Wesson and Eric Garcetti stepped up to the plate for the first time in Los Angeles to make this a great place to live. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. You are our last speaker. Our first speaker in the queue is Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Wesson, did you want to speak before?
Did you want to say more?
Mr. Wesson is done. Mr. Garcetti.
Mr. Wesson has more.
Now, Mr. Wesson says less is best. Mr. Wesson is done.
Less is best, thank you.
I asked for an aye vote.
Short speeches win elections. Thank you. Let me start first by thanking Mr. Wesson. I was very proud that you hosted the historic signing ceremony with the mayor and with all the great work that was done by Scope Agenda, Metropolitan Alliance, the Apollo Alliance, of ensuring that we would not only put our words into action, but that we would actually push forward in the future by looking backwards at our past. It was Tom LeBons who first taught me about the affiliation here of the pueblo, that it wasn't a north, south, east, west grid, it's actually northeast to southwest, because the original settlers of this town knew all about green building, and that was the best way to get breezes into the house, to cool it when we need to be cooled, to warm it when we need to be warmed. They built adobe, which was the most sustainable building material of its day. As we look at the future, we know that Los Angeles has understood green building. We just got away from the past, and we got away from our roots. And I think around the world, we're awakening, whether it's the cars we drive, it's the lights that we read by, reducing our carbon footprint and global warming has become a cause locally, and we have ensured that here in Los Angeles, it's felt as strongly in all our communities as in any of our communities. And I want to thank that the Apollo Alliance has ensured that we don't have to agree that there's a split between jobs and the environment anymore. They go hand in hand. While our friends at the state and federal levels kind of continue to work to establish national and international standards for greenhouse gas emissions, Los Angeles has already taken the lead here, concrete steps to reducing global warming. A few weeks ago, almost all of us here stood with the mayor, and we pledged to reduce our GHG emissions by 35%. That's the most ambitious goal of any big city anywhere, 5% more than New York City, and it's a scary pledge to make, but the nice thing about a pledge is once you make it, you got to do it, especially in this business. And so, by, you know, looking at that and looking at what we can do, the retrofitting of our buildings here continues to build on what we passed here, colleagues, legislation. We are the first big city in America to mandate that all of our new buildings be LEED certified. We're going to push that up to silver soon as well. By retrofitting the old ones, we don't just look at what's going to come online, we look what's already there. And we know that buildings here consume 36% of our energy, and they emit about a third of our carbon emissions in there. And we also have looked at how we can continue to make sure that that reduction program is not only done by the city, but it's inspired the school district, it's inspired the Community College District. We're the greenest building place in America, and in doing that, we're going to bring green jobs here, and you're going to fill those green jobs. We're going to ensure that our black and our brown communities have those jobs. And we know there's more money now going into the green sector, this is a great statistic, than all the money at the height of the dot-com era into internet stuff. And we want to make sure that money is flowing into this community, into our community, and we want to make sure those investments aren't just made in companies, but they're made in people. And in closing, one last place that I know that we can continue to push forward with Apollo Alliance and under Mr. Wesson's leadership and your passion, is to make sure that our poorest, job-forest communities work with our Community College District here, Trade Tech, Los Angeles City College. We need to be purchasing homes out there and use them as laboratories, so that students learn how to retrofit buildings, and at the end of it, they sell that house and they get a new one. And the laboratory moves on from home to home, improving the buildings and the homes that we live in in Los Angeles while giving people the skills to be the green builders of tomorrow. So, congratulations. Thank you so much, Mr. Wesson. We look forward to the passage of this today.
Thank you, Mr. Garcetti. Our next speaker is Mr. Rosendale.
Thank you, Madam President. First of all, Mr. Wesson, bless you for putting this together. You did the right thing. It's good for everybody. I'd like the city staff to come up, Reginald Byron Jones Sawyer Jr., who is the Asset Manager Division Department of General Services, and Robert Zine, who also works...
I believe it's Reginald Byron Jones Sawyer III.
I believe it's Reginald Byron Jones Sawyer III.
Reginald Byron Jones Sawyer Senior.
I'm sorry. Stand corrected. Thank you.
Gentlemen, good morning. This is fantastic. You see the community there. It's a no-brainer. We're all for it. Explain it real quickly how it works.
This gives the opportunity for the city of Los Angeles to retrofit their buildings, to get them up to more LEED standard requirements. A lot of our buildings aren't as energy efficient, as many of you know, as they could be. We have over 900 buildings. Right now, the Department of Water and Power is doing extensive inventory of all of our buildings, and it's going to give us a laundry list of what it will take to bring them up to make them more energy efficient. After they complete their analysis, that information will be given to General Services. We will detail what needs to be done, what skill sets need to be done, and also what kind of training we need to do to get our staff, and more important, staff out in the community up to speed so that they can learn these new technology to do these jobs. In addition, we'll give them an opportunity to work with the unions and hopefully feed into the unions, hopefully feed into city jobs, and create a, really, an entry path for people in the inner city and other disadvantaged areas to dovetail into some of the newest, most aspiring jobs that we have right now. And we'll be the boilerplate for what we hope other communities and other cities will piggyback off of.
Now, explain, from the other level of what we're talking about, what this does for us.
Great. Robert Seines, Assistant General Manager, Community Development Department. This really also gives us the opportunity to invest our workforce investment dollars into the training side, the human capital side of our private investments. And since this is an emerging technology, we're right on the ground floor. Yesterday, we were able to announce an award to LA Trade Tech for $250,000 from the Workforce Investment Board for the utilities component. And it's going to really mean jobs now, and as the technology grows and as the industry grows, it'll be jobs for the future. And we really want to tie this into our local hiring policies that's been championed in the ad hoc committees and HCD, so that we're hiring our local residents in these good-paying jobs as they continue to open up in the future.
And we all know, like I carry this cup all the time, which is a job, is the best path for every young person going forward, education and jobs, so you're going to do that. When you do this apprenticeship program, will we forget about this crazy criminal justice system that puts a stamp on these young men's head, that makes them un-jobable? How do we get around that issue?
It is the early opportunities. You know, in the 15 years I've been doing this business, it's getting the young men and young women early opportunities, getting them to believe with their hearts and minds that they can succeed, but they need to be able to see the opportunities, they need to be able to see the jobs, they need to be able to see the training and the education that's in front of them, and that's the work that we all have ahead of us.
This is excellent, because it ties it into what we call prevention and intervention strategies, rather than the suppression strategies that put them in jail.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, yeah. Well, this is terrific, and it's a great opportunity for the community. I also like the fact that we're talking about a union play in this, so that we get living wages, not this minimum wages, which is ridiculous, a real job with real pay and a real future ahead. Thank you, Mr. Wesson. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Bless you.
Ms. Garul is our next speaker.
Thank you. Well, those are hard acts to follow with my colleagues and Mr. Wesson, Mr. Garcetti, and Mr. Rosendahl, and thank you, Mr. Wesson, for your leadership on this issue. It's a win-win. Not only are we getting environmental buildings LEED certified, looking at all of our buildings, but we create jobs and we create training programs for our young people. As, you know, Mr. Rosendahl talked about, the ability to get kids jobs is really the way we address some of the problems that we have with gang violence and issues and even unemployment. And so this partnership with the unions and the environmental community is really extraordinary, and I think a model for the nation. And that's what Los Angeles is all about, is being a model, to do things differently than other cities or other organizations. We're also a model of partnering with groups like yours and taking issues and ideas that you have and making them public policy. That's what I think a democratic process is, about bringing everyone to the table. And as Mr. Garcetti mentioned, you know, a lot of people, for many years, criticized those of us that talked a lot about environment, and it's not financially feasible, and we have other issues that are important. Well, guess what? Everybody's talking about it now. Everybody's recognizing it, no matter what community, no matter what city you live in. It's not just those environmentalists. It's everyone realizing the importance of doing something for our community and our world, for our future, for our children and our grandchildren. And so this program and this idea is, again, one which we know we're going to have to look to find money to do that, but doing the right thing is always worth the investment, a long-term investment that we will have in the city of Los Angeles. So I commend you. I want to be brief, like Mr. Wesson said, less is best, because my colleagues have also done a pretty good job, but thank you to all of you. This is for our future, and you've been a great part of that. Thank you very, very much.
Thank you very much, Ms. Garul. Our next speaker is Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President, colleagues. Just want to share with you that we now have a building agreement, Los Angeles booklet in it, it breaks down benefits of green building, but more importantly, it has websites for programs for sustainable site planning, programs for water efficiency, programs for energy efficiency. It speaks to programs for conservation materials, resources. The reason why I share this with you is that if I can call Robert and Reginald Sawyer III...
Jones Esquire, Honorable III.
Excalibur. Is he still here or did he leave? If you hold my time, please. This council in the past four years have passed several motions. For example, one, green rooftops.
Yes.
We spoke to the issue through reports and committee discussion, and we were in a position where we understand we were going to do further study to discuss the cost factor of these green rooftops, and what would it take for the private sector to participate. We've put forth all of these websites and all this information for the private sector to participate. It's incumbent upon us to experiment with that cost issue, so we can make it feasible. How do you see the coordination of that effort, given that our first attempts will be with city buildings to understand those costs, but now we're talking about the benefit and cost returns and resources? How do you start linking that with the issue of job generators and actually creating that connection? Is there any discussion or any thought? Because we have all these floating pieces. And it's great to have brochures with beautiful, you know, graphics with websites, but accountability really is the performance. When do we get to see results from this effort? Can you just speak to that for...
I know specifically with this effort, the councilman of the 10th district, at first, there was discussion about getting the initial analysis would take 14 months. Through his leadership, we've cut that time in half, and we'll be able to get, by December, get some real numbers and specific recommendations of what we need to do with these buildings. As you also know, there's some companion motions that have gone through, not only for new buildings and making sure that they're LEED certified and up to silver level, but there's also an effort by GSD and BOE to look at the existing buildings and how can we get them to be more LEED certified and maybe even to a silver level. I expect a report or something to come out, hopefully by the end of this year, early next year, from Bureau of Engineering, specifically talking about green roofs and getting our buildings more LEED certified. And from that effort, as you were saying, we'll cost out all of those efforts, we'll figure out what the manpower and resources that we need, and hopefully link them all up into one smooth-flowing entity, where we bring in new people with new jobs, but also train our own staff on green roofs, and so that we're better able to address all those issues. And then, like you said, to make it real, to come back to this council, ask for money, to come back to this council, ask for resources.
And on the training side, we're starting the investment now. We are working with the community colleges and very much in particular with Trade Tech, and the initial investment that I mentioned of $250,000 will allow a number of folks to start the initial training, so we could align it once the jobs open up.
Well, on March 7th of this year, was a presentation to the Plumb Committee about how the energy environment, as well as Department of City Planning, were supposed to provide us a semblance of implementation. What I would like to recommend, that as we get ready, I know we just finished our last budget season, but as this council gets ready to look at the budget for next year, where do we start actually establishing priorities and what it takes to actually implement? We are talking about a whole other training element. We're talking about cooperation with the unions and how they can absorb some of the workforce, but just significant, what's the cost in addressing these buildings if we're going to have a model to work with so that we can be establishing incentives for the private sector to do this? So we can cheer and jump up and down and talk about how great it is, but where's the incentive? Other than the obvious, it's a healthier earth, but in business, in the business world, what does that really mean? So my assumption is that when we get our report back from what we're doing already with these other products, that perhaps we'll have a bridge being built with what you're doing. I mean, we can talk in my office or another time, but take those action steps to actually stimulate the different codes and requirements that we can see these results and actually stimulate these jobs. Otherwise, I just think it's going to be, I hate to say this, I'd hate to see this become nothing but fanfare, but actual, real jobs, and that's something that I'm seeking, and that's the basis for my questions. But thank you for your answers.
Thank you very much, Mr. Reyes. Mr. Alarcon is next, and then Mr. Cardenas.
Yes, I think there can be nothing but commendations for Councilman Wesson for his leadership and creating a holistic opportunity for us to look at the environmental side of things, but at the same time, closing the loop and going full circle on the environment, making it a good opportunity economically, socially, and otherwise. The one thing I noticed in the motion, there was no mention, you mentioned the Bureau of Engineering, and I know that the Bureau of Engineering is the vanguard on issues of sustainability and energy efficiency. Dating back to when I was a councilman, the very first sustainability project for the city of Los Angeles was Lakeview Terrace Library, and it was specifically targeted as a sustainability project. Bill Holland, the city engineer at the time, was not an advocate for sustainability, because he thought it would be far too expensive, and during the course of that project, he became an absolute advocate, and when he retired from the city, set up a business promoting sustainable projects. So I wanted to ask Mr. Wesson if he would incorporate more specifically the Bureau of Engineering in this report, so that we get the benefit of the knowledge that they've developed over the last 12 years or so regarding sustainability and energy efficiency. And it's a friendly amendment, and of course, we all want to support this.
It is a friendly amendment. I take it as such. I do believe we have already been in dialogue with engineering, but to do what Mr. Alarcon suggests makes it official, so I'm fine with that.
Thank you.
Let's just don't let it slow things down.
No, we will not. Thank you, Mr. Cardenas.
I think people need to take note that we have here two representatives from two very distinct, different departments, yet at the same time, it's a perfect example of how we need to learn how to utilize our resources and our talents and our abilities to take our community to a higher level. You have a department that oversees millions of square feet of real estate and billions of dollars of assets, and then you have another department that is involved in making sure that we nurture jobs, especially for our young people in this city, that we nurture them off the streets and into responsible activity, and yet this motion is actually about all of that. And then on top of that, you have technology, where we're looking at utilizing the best and latest technology to retrofit, to purchase, to make sure that we have standards about what kind of buildings we're going to occupy into the future. And then you're also talking about a technology that it's unfortunate that for far too long, especially when it came to communities where the education level wasn't very high, that people assumed, because you didn't have a high level of education, because you didn't understand the $10 words that buzz around when it comes to talking about the environment, that you didn't care about the environment. That's just not true, and I think this motion is actually breaking down many of those barriers and taking us to a place where unfortunately, good-intended people didn't think we could do this. How many people standing out here care about the environment? Raise your hand. In any language, everybody here cares about the environment. But at the same time, I think it's important for people to understand that today, we're starting, as Mr. Reyes said, and we're challenging ourselves to actually put our money where our mouth is, to actually put this in action, and actually look at results of more bodies, more individuals being trained, creating an industry here in the city of Los Angeles that doesn't exist today but will exist tomorrow, based on this motion and on this effort. Today, just earlier, you had two kids who grew up in Bacoima, sons of immigrants, who are now engineers, who now have titles, some of the most important titles in this city. One is my brother and one is myself. Our first job, our first paycheck came from a summer job, and that's where we started on this effort of community service. I give that example because we only did that in a small way in the past. There aren't enough examples of transitioning from that first experience to what you see today between my brother and myself. What I envision today is we're going to see the sons and daughters and people standing right here, who are going to be leaders in this community, who are going to take off on an industry that doesn't exist today the way it's going to exist tomorrow, and then we're going to have dozens and hundreds and thousands of examples like that. We have been moving too slow in this city when it comes to the environment. We've been moving too slow when it comes to moving into realizing that it does make dollars and cents for us to go ahead and do this. As was mentioned by Councilman Alarcon, we had one of our top leaders in this city, our technology people, in the beginning, way back, saying, "It's too expensive. We shouldn't do this." And he himself was converted to the reality that we must do this. It's the right thing to do. It's the efficient thing to do. It's the responsible thing to do. So I just wanted to say that this is a great day for the city of Los Angeles, but at the same time, as Councilmember Reyes said, this is the day to recognize the challenge and the day to tell Angelenos, we are going to meet that challenge, and then to have people like you back here, so that we can talk about the dozens, and then eventually hundreds and thousands of jobs that have been created based on this motion. So I want to thank Herb Wesson. I would like to thank the president, and more importantly, more importantly, I'd like to thank the Apollo Alliance for proving and just getting rid of that misconception that if you grow up in poor communities, if you live in a poor community, you don't care about the environment. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, Mr. Cardenas. That's our final speaker on this item, so let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
14 ayes.
That is approved. Congratulations. Thank you, Mr. Wesson, and thank you to our city staff for their hard work on this issue. Congratulations to everybody who's come down to City Hall on this. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 29, and that was called special by Councilmember Cardenas.
Councilmember Cardenas, we have item number 29 before us. Okay, we'll hold that. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 30, and that was called special by cards from the public.
Okay, we have Robin Bass here on item number 30. If we could ask folks to just allow Ms. Bass to come forward to the podium here. Good morning.
Good morning. I'm here to request the council to consider favorably our quick claim request on a storm rain easement, and this was put in place about 40 years ago when our neighborhood was developing, and it was never used. Oh, you can't hear me? The neighborhood's now fully developed, and this quick claim is necessary for us to add a small addition to our house for our in-laws. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Does anybody wish to be heard on item number 30? If not, let's go ahead. Yep. Yep, please open the roll, please close the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Yes, Mr. Labange.
Madam, if you wait, I'll ask you a question. But, Mr. President?
Yes, sir.
Reconsider item number 10, this was the matter that we already approved and went forthwith, and you get forthwith it back. Technical minimum was rushed too, so we're going to reconsider this. The city attorney's here.
Did we send that forthwith, madam?
Reconsider number 10?
We did, okay. Well, so we'll have to vote to suspend the rules first, Mr. Labange, in order to bring back a forthwith motion.
Good.
Please open the roll on suspension of the rules, close the rule, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, that is, the rules have now been suspended. If we can now open the roll on reconsideration of 10, please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
Okay, that is now before us. Mr. Labange.
Very much. Madam City Attorney, if you want to just come here, because you rushed up to me when we started the meeting. We've reconsidered, we circulated the motion. Staff, if you could just answer the questions and tell us exactly. So, thank you, Mr. President, members. Ms. Carey, why don't you start off first? You can clarify it.
Tricia Carey with the CLA. Before you amend the motion that goes with the Prop K assessment report, it adds some technical changes and then obligates transfers of money to GSD by June 30th for the projects that were approved in last year's assessments report.
Great. Neil Drucker, you're okay with it?
Yes, I am.
All right, good, thank you.
Jackie Wagner, CEO, yes, I'm okay with it.
All right, good. Madam City Attorney, this clarifies it?
Yes.
Okay, ask for an eye vote. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Labange. Can please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
Fourteen eyes.
That is approved. Let's send that forthwith again.
Thank you.
If there's no objection, also number 12 forthwith without objection as well.
Thank you.
Thank you. On item number 29, there are closed session questions on that. Does anybody wish to be heard in open session on number 29? Mr. Cardenas called that special, and we'll be speaking about that in closed session. Okay, why don't you go ahead and say a couple of comments in open session then first, Mr. Cardenas.
Thank you very much. Item 29 pertains to the potential purchase of a two-building complex, 201 and 221 North Figueroa Street. The current owner had or has an obligation to give us what you call a first right of refusal. The current owner's intended, his intention, the current owner's intention is to sell the building. They've approached the city of Los Angeles, asked us if we're interested in buying this building. With that, we've been given an opportunity to do what you call due diligence, and in that process, we've been able to look at the buildings and to decide whether or not structurally there's something we're still interested in, and to decide what, based on the tenant makeup of the building, if we're still interested in buying these buildings, and things of that nature. We have had opportunities to look at this building under other ownerships, to purchase this building, but one thing I'd like to point out is that I think right now is a perfect time for us to consider purchasing these buildings. The main reason is because, as you'll see in a few minutes, we are better prepared today, we are more knowledgeable, we understand more about how to buy buildings of 600,000 square feet and more, such as this complex. We have been able to do our due diligence, we've learned from it, we've engaged more experts than ever before, we have literally looked at the structure of the building and exposed portions of the building to actually look at the welds within the building, based on some of the questions that came from my colleague Greg Smith regarding whether or not this building actually meets a certain standard and/or is in the kind of condition that we should consider buying this building. I'm trying to keep my comments generic, ladies and gentlemen, because we do have some information that we're going to have to discuss in closed session pertaining to lease agreements and things of that nature that are privy and privileged information between the landlord and ourselves. One thing that I'd like to point out as well, I've been a councilman close to four years now, we've had discussions about buying several large buildings in downtown Los Angeles, we've had many discussions about multimillion-dollar and potentially even billion-dollar decisions within this city, and I'd like to thank and comment to the people of Los Angeles that in this process, I have learned to gain more respect than ever before for the people who work for the city of Los Angeles, because they have met the challenge, this time, they have met the challenge of making sure that they understand better their roles, that they have learned how to dialogue and work with third-party entities such as engineering firms, architectural firms, real estate advisor firms, et cetera, like never before. I come out of the private industry, as a matter of fact, I actually owned a real estate brokerage at one time, so when it comes to buying buildings, I usually have many, many questions and a perspective of wonderment and also expertise that perhaps some people in government don't have. I don't know everything, but I know more today about real estate through this process than ever before. I know that our people in the city of Los Angeles know more today than ever before. I know that we have engaged professionals and engaged them in a way that we've challenged them to give us some very stringent analysis and also to answer some very difficult questions so that we can conduct this process. It is public information what the sale, proposed sale amount is, right?
Yes.
Okay, what's that proposed sale amount?
$219 million.
$219 million. Ladies and gentlemen, we're talking about the potential consideration of a purchase of $219 million, and with that, we should give it proper scrutiny. With that, we should give the proper analysis. There are organizations and companies that actually buy buildings such as this literally every day. They literally revise these every day. They have in-house people who are of the utmost expertise and who give them answers quickly, methodically, and in an expert fashion. We, on the other hand, have had to reach out to third-party experts and get their input, and we've actually, in some cases, double-checked their information, and actually have confirmed our answers and feel very comfortable that these buildings, for example, are in good structural condition. Yes, they have some conditions that need to be corrected, just like any building would. What are the age of these buildings, please?
One tower was built in 1986, the other in 1991.
Okay, so for the public to understand, are these considered old buildings, new buildings, or newer buildings as far as these kinds of class A buildings go?
Based upon the current age, I would say it's a newer building. If we move forward with the acquisition, it will represent the two newest buildings that we own.
Okay, so that we understand, so people don't get concerned, even though the buildings are about, give or take, 20 years old, they definitely are newer structures. They are not considered old buildings. So one of the things I'd like you to point out for the people of Los Angeles, a concern by Councilmember Greg Smith, the last time we were looking at this potential purchase some time ago, he talked about the new requirements on buildings being built in the city of Los Angeles based on the new technologies and methodologies we need to use after the 1994 earthquake, or earthquakes. What is the structure of this building, and what did we do to confirm or to understand whether or not this building is in proper structural condition?
Let me ask Bill Lee to come to the table. He's from the Bureau of Engineering.
I'm Bill Lee with the Bureau of Engineering. We actually had, were able to obtain a report that was done by Nabe Youssef Associate. Nabe Youssef is a renowned structural engineer in the city of Los Angeles and have done many buildings throughout the world. In fact, the ferry building that we're here is also, was also done by Nabe Youssef. And through that report, Nabe Youssef actually had tested 31, did 31 non-destructive testing of the moment frame system, and I'll quote this here, "Found that the connection tested had no damages indicated."
Okay, and were we able to give any other analysis on top of what they submitted to us?
Yes, we did. We actually had our structural engineers in the Bureau of Engineering look at that, as well as hire URS Corporation, another large design engineering firm, to confirm that information. So three pairs of eyes have looked at this.
Okay, now with that, when it came to the welds within the structure of the building, because the building is made, the interior of the building, the skeleton of the building is made out of metal, correct?
That's correct.
So therefore, they had to weld the different beams together, and that was one of the concerns. Now, based on the analysis that they've done, did they look at the plans of the building? Did they physically go and look at the specific welds of the building? What did they do?
They actually, the plans are made available, and they looked at the plans as well as actually did ultrasonic test, removing the fireproofing, and this is at 31 locations, half of it in...
How many locations?
31 locations, and there are approximately 600 moment frame connections in both towers, so approximately more than 5% of the connections were actually tested.
Now, when they tested those connections, did any of them come up substandard, any one of those 31, according to the report?
No, this was sent to, again, to independent, a lab, twining lab, and again, the, I'll quote here, "Connections tested show no damages indicated," and that was consistent with all 31 connections.
So based on those 31 welds and that sample, it appears that there's no reason for us to consider this building to have a compromised structural integrity, correct?
Confirmed.
Okay, now, when you're buying a building, that's the kind of due diligence you're supposed to do, right?
That's right.
Okay, have we ever done that kind of extensive testing on a building in the past before we've considered either leasing it for a long-term basis or purchasing it?
I don't believe we've ever done as much as we've done...
I've asked that question in the past, and I've never gotten an answer that we've done this extensive testing.
No.
But my point to you is this, we've had opportunities in the past, and I'm not saying we've done things right or wrong in the past. All I'm trying to point out here by this question is that we today are more thorough than ever before. Today, we're using more technology than ever before. Today, we're double and triple-checking things more than ever before, and I think that's the standard that we need to hold for this city, because we are talking about the potential investment of $216 million of the people's money, and also the occupancy of thousands of workers within the city of Los Angeles and others, they're going to be inside of this building, and if we're going to be the owners, we need to make sure that we're comfortable and confident that this is a proper investment and a safe place for our workers to work.
Yes.
Now, my time's up, but I want to ask one more question, and I'll come back later. But how does the purchase of Fig Plaza, or the potential purchase of Fig Plaza, fit into our long-range goals about when it comes to office facilities in our master plan?
Yes. The Department of General Services in 1996 developed a facilities master plan. We also updated that plan in 1997, and then we also forwarded to the MFC in 2006 another document that talked about lease versus buying. What is consistent in all three of those documents is that if we are going to have a long-term occupancy, we should buy a building or build a building, we should own it. And so this particular acquisition is consistent with the department's strategic plan for office facility space.
Thank you.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Mr. Smith.
Well, thank you, and I want to thank particularly Mr. Cardenas for exploring some of those earthquake-related questions which we brought up in committee, and I think it has a lot more validity coming from Mr. Cardenas, a trained engineer, than it does from myself, although I worked on the earthquake ordinances after the 1994 earthquake. I think it's important to reiterate that Nabe Youssef not only is a world-renowned expert in this field, but he was also, I believe, a consultant to us in writing those new codes after the 1994 earthquake and helping us understand the whole moment frame building concept, which had heretofore not been addressed by any city earthquake codes. And so this building, I think it's very important for us to understand, this building is very safe in today's terminology, at least as we understand earthquake dynamics today. I want to ask a question, and it's for the CEO probably, on the economic analysis side of this, or whoever would be the expert. But interestingly enough, after we've gone through extensive research on this and work and talked about it in committee, an intern who joined me just this morning from USC Public Policy asked a question that we couldn't answer, and as it looked at it, it changes, I think, the numbers a bit, but maybe not the dynamics, and that is, as we look to the financial benefit of the lease credits, all the financial components, there's one that's missing, and that is, what is the loss of revenue to the city in property tax if we own the building versus if someone else owns it and we continue to lease it? And so do you have a number you can affix to that dollar amount, and what will that do to that net value? I think we need to know that.
Actually, in our initial report that went to both Councilman Cardenas Committee and Budget and Finance, we did actually look at the lost property tax revenue, and even with the loss of property tax revenue, which, if memory serves us, in the sort of hundreds of thousands of dollars range, we still show on a net present value basis that it makes much more sense for the city to buy this building than to continue to lease it. So we did actually, I believe it is on the report that was circulated, and as my team sat around and brainstormed, we actually caught that, that, you know, in addition to what we gain, we will lose the property tax on this building.
But that's not called out in the analysis that was sent out to us, so...
I think you got the summary analysis due to some of the issues related to closed session, so...
Right, so, but you did think of that, it is part of that...
That's correct.
I think, and you have to get down to this bottom line, bottom line, after all those things are considered, what is the net value on an annualized basis to the city as far as the expense versus revenue side of the whole equation? What is the net dollar?
I can actually look the number up, but I do want to be clear, and we state this in our report, that for the first five years or so, there is a net cost to the city because of some of the things that we are taking over, but as long as we are in that building more than five years, we are in a good spot, and if I can go real quickly to our attachment. In terms of our annual benefit, we're looking at benefits in the neighborhood of $2 to $3 million, and again, it varies by our debt service and some of the assumptions we're making about how lease costs would have risen over time, but we're basically looking at positive net present values in the $2 to $3 million range.
I think that's important, particularly the news media who are listening, and for those that are watching on Channel 35, that on the lifespan of the ownership of the building, we benefit $2 to $3 million a year on an annualized average basis. Another aspect of that concept is, as we look at alternatives, and that is, there was discussion about we're going to acquire the land where Parker Center is once we close that facility and open the new police facility. If we were to build a new City Hall, southeast, west, whatever it would be called over there...
Far east.
Far east. What would, the timeframe's become critical, so if you talked about five years, what would it take to get to the point where we demolish, first of all, relocate the people out of Parker, demolish it, and then build a new facility? That timeframe would be at least five years or more.
At a minimum.
At a minimum, absolute minimum. And so when you talk about that first five years of ownership, we've got to own it for five years before alternatives really become available to us anyway.
That's correct, and also we looked at what it would take if for some reason, we decided that we were not going to stay in this building, and we had to relocate all of those city employees with the lease terms, and there was analysis done of that, and first of all, as you've heard, commercial office space, the vacancy rates are very low, and so just logistically, not even just thinking of cost, which would be higher, but logistically relocating those city departments would be very difficult to do for that timeframe.
And on that logistic issue, I think we have sunk cost of already $25 million in the building...
That's correct.
...that we would lose and have to repay again if we relocated those people in the way of telephone lines, data systems, et cetera. So those sunk costs are gone if we move, and you don't get them back. So those are things I think are important. I just want to join what Mr. Cardenas said. I voted for this two years ago, I wish we bought it then, because we would be really butts up now, but again, it's still a good deal for us now, and it was a better deal for us two years ago, but nonetheless, I think the departments, those of you sitting right there, did a far superior job on this proposal than you did two years ago, and maybe that's why we didn't pass it two years ago, because there's still a lot of questions. What you did this time is due diligence, and every one of your categories was superior, and I congratulate all of you, and I'm very pleased to support this again. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman.
Thank you very much, Mr. Smith. Mr. Rosendahl is our next speaker.
Thank you, Madam President. I agree with both Mr. Cardenas and Mr. Smith. I wasn't here two years ago, so I don't take any of the blame on this thing, but there's a huge difference in price, correct?
The building was offered to the city in 2004 for $125 million, but it eventually sold for $133 million, and today, the Beacon Capital Partners Group is asking $219 million, and they actually have another offer.
Yeah, and the amazing thing is, they just jumped in a couple or three years ago, and they stand to make a $100 million profit, is that right, more or less?
That's pretty close, Councilman.
Yeah, 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 and obviously, we've learned our lessons about the due diligence, and Smith knows about the homework. It's obviously a no-brainer, I can't go into what we did in closed session, but the bottom line is, for the constituent to have services in one building that they, as customers, can move around the building and deal with the city bureaucracy in one location is what government is supposed to be about: efficiency, accountability, and quick service. So that's good. Secondly, it's a no-brainer, owning something is always better than leasing or renting, if you can make it happen, because it only appreciates in value. And third, the downtown, thanks to Ms. Perry's leadership and Ms. DeWiz's and others, is turning into an incredible place for all of us in many aspects, so it makes sense, it's sorry it's another $100 million, but better now than wait another few years and find ourselves in a... few years and find ourselves in a worse pickle than we are right now. So, thank you, Madam President.
Thank you very much, Mr. Zine.
Thank you. Good morning.
Good morning.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon.
At 12:15. Parking. I know that the Public Works Building, there's been some issues regarding parking that Mr. Miller resolved for us. What's the parking situation with this purchase?
If the city council and mayor decide to acquire this facility, that facility provides 1,249 tandem spaces in a subterranean parking structure.
Would we have to have a valet for that, with tandem and the ordinances on tandem parking? You're chuckling, but I think there's an ordinance that requires if you have tandem parking, you've got to have a valet, if that's correct.
I'm being told by my staff that is correct.
So, we'd have to have valet to come to the city of L.A.?
I don't-
I think they do that in Beverly Hills for the people go to the post office. Can you respond to that? It's somewhat facetious to have valet parking in a city building, but as I understand, the ordinance requires if you've got tandem, you've got to have valet?
The ordinance requires that if it's tandem, you have parking attendant.
Attendant.
And that's simply to take the key, and if you're in the front, then move car.
Okay.
It's not valet parking in the sense of dropping off your car and-
No tuxedo required, Mr. Cardenas, there's no tuxedo required.
Right.
Okay. What about the issue on the, you say 1,200 tandem spots? What would our population be? Would we occupy the entire building? Is that the plan?
Currently, I believe the building's about 98% leased out, so it's almost at full capacity.
Leased out to the city of L.A. or leased out to other-
The city occupies about 54% of the total space, and then if you add in the county and state, you get up to an occupancy of 73%. Then the balance is non-city tenants, and, you know, we've looked at their leases, and we know what's going to happen in the near future.
So, would the plan be to eventually house all city employees, not, obviously, not 40,000, but would we still lease to state, county, or would it all be occupied by city employees?
Well-
Or would we still get income coming from the outside?
Right, right. We will have some income as long as those leases are in place, but the plan would be, when those leases expire in the future, to consider putting city employees in that building.
And the issue of cost versus the market, you talk about real estate, and we know that the foreclosure rate on residential is increasing. The market on commercial in downtown Los Angeles, what's the evaluation on the market price versus residential? Because I know they're building a lot of lofts from the office buildings, et cetera, but commercial space, is that following the residential market, or is that changing and going higher in value?
It's absolutely, well, the commercial real estate market, and we have our brokers here from C B R E, but let me just quickly comment on your question. Probably the opposite is happening with commercial office space when you look at what's happening to residential. In the early '90s, the vacancy rate for commercial office space in downtown L.A. was around 29%. Today, it's around 13%. Part of the reason for that is that a number of other buildings, Class B and Class C buildings, have been converted downtown to residential uses. So, the total inventory of office space downtown has been reduced significantly just by that. But also, as you may have mentioned and other council members mentioned, L.A. is becoming an extremely attractive place for investing in real estate and particularly commercial office space. So, right now, we're looking at a situation where it's at 13% vacancy rate, and when it gets down to about 10%, you will start hearing some discussions about the construction of new office space.
And all that office space that we had available would be for lofts and residential?
Yes.
So, somewhat of a disconnect.
Yeah, those B and C buildings are just about gone.
And the value now, you say, is $219 million?
The appraisal is $214 million, but the offer is for $219 million. And so, that's about, according to Councilman Cardenas, about 2.2% above the appraised value, but we have the authority from the city attorney to offer up to 10% above the Class A appraisal.
And that's because of the competition for that particular property?
Yes, and in this case, they have another offer for that amount.
And the issue that we went through with 419, 433, leases that expired, we were paying above what the previous lease was. Are we on current lease at Fig Plaza?
Well, the interesting thing is that when we decided to lease in Fig Plaza, it was in the early '90s when they did have that 29% vacancy rate. So, we got some rates then that may have not been viewed as being very favorable in the other nine, in the early 1990s, but those rates today are somewhere between $1.55 a square foot and $1.60 a square foot, and those are outstanding rates for 2007. Right now, downtown, most of the leases that are being negotiated for commercial office space are in the $280, I'm sorry, the $2.80 to $3.30 range per square foot.
Except when does our lease expire?
Our lease in Fig Plaza expires in 2010, and we exhaust our options to stay in the building in 2016.
So, this investment, and I remember when I was in Management Technologies General Services, one of the ideas was to purchase property versus leases. I think at the time, we were spending somewhere $50 million a year on leases throughout the city of Los Angeles. I know there's 900 and some buildings or structures that we have occupancy. So, I've always thought that purchasing that would be a benefit, that we would save money because we've got to house the 40-plus thousand employees someplace. Just one final question. What do we plan to ultimately, when we can occupy the 1,200 parking spaces and the office space, what departments do you anticipate going in there?
Well, right now, you have Animal Services, you have a small unit for the Bureau of Engineering, you have the Cultural Affairs Department, you have the Department of City Planning, you have the Department of Transportation, you have the Los Angeles Department of Building and Safety, and you have some space in there for the Los Angeles Fire Department and the Los Angeles Police Department. In the future, as vacancies occur in the building, we would look at bringing other departments into the building.
And we currently have other buildings in downtown that we're leasing, where we could transfer those downtown employees to that Fig Plaza?
That's exactly the concept we're looking at.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Gruel.
Oh. Thank you very much, Mr. Garcetti. I just, I wanted to just add what I've heard from some of the committee members, and we did have an opportunity in our Budget and Finance Committee to really go through a number of the details relative to this purchase, and it's, I think, the position that we're taking, which is, it's a good, it's a good deal for us when you look long-term, and then a lot of the information that we were provided this time, we were not provided with previously and kind of learned from that about, and the timing-wise, as far as the ability of council to have an opportunity to really look through each part, each piece of this, because it's a major purchase-
Yes.
-a large amount of money for us. But when you look at the numbers, you see that, in fact, we are being very frugal and actually looking ahead as to how we're going to save money ultimately in going through with this project. And I introduced two motions today, which I think with my colleague-
Yes.
-Mr. Cardenas, which is looking at an overall policy on lease and purchase and a plan. So, when you come to council at a later date in time saying, you know, this lease is up and we want to purchase, we will all have been educated about, that's part of our policy, it fits into our plan. Of course, that's going to move forward with all of the attached documentation that demonstrates it, but we're looking forward to that piece of this, which we think is critically important. And I think you're well on your way, as you went through this exercise in the purchase of this building and how it will impact the rest of our departments. One of the questions that had been asked as well in committee was whether or not, you know, everyone needed to be in the same building. Did, you know, was that a value added for us? Were there other opportunities, smaller buildings, et cetera? And I think we really found that, and I had experiences as well, that having those departments that are related to development issues, approval and plan process, where you have building and safety, you have planning department, you have fire department-
That's right.
-trying to think of the other, city clerk, some others that are there, that were all connected. So, if you came in and you had a project that you were doing in the city of Los Angeles, whether you were a nonprofit or a developer or even a homeowner, you could go from floor to floor and get taken care of and get the service, which we think is so critically important. And so, this building has allowed us to do that, which even when we had everyone here in City Hall, there was never enough room for everyone to be able to accommodate that kind of service delivery system. And so, that's another reason why we think this is a great deal, and the parking and accessibility, all of those things, I think, are really a benefit. So, special thank you to Mr. Cardenas, who I know, and his committee looked very closely at this, as we did in budget, and really set us on the path, and asked a lot of the tough questions that were important and got the right answers, so that we feel comfortable in having an eye vote on this item today. So, we look forward to responding to the other motion, but I think, just wanted to add that we have, as I think, believe this process was a lot better than we've seen in the past.
Thank you, Councilman.
You're welcome. Thank you, Mr. Garcetti.
Thank you. Myself on the speaker queue, although I think somebody might have hit my button. Was it Tom? Was that you? Mr. Labange? Mr. Labange and then Mr. Cardenas.
Everybody's involved on this here, and I know the value of a public building, and I know the value of this Civic Center. And now, if this goes ahead properly, then there will be a connection of another resource for the city of Los Angeles, for its people. I was over there this morning getting a building permit, and I then went over to the 16th floor to see if someone was in, but they weren't in from the police department. But there's a lot of city, county, state people there, so there's a great value. So, if all this goes through, the one guy wants to do, and I know Karen will keep a keen eye on this, see how it could connect to water and power somehow, because that's another value to the city of Los Angeles. And see how the airspace could connect above Fire Station 3, which has a large area to the south. And then you have a greater value for the people of Los Angeles. I thank you for what you do and bring it important to you, and it's a small world, Chuck, as I saw you there in New York.
Come on, Tom. Tom, tell that story.
Ms. Perry is our next speaker.
Thanks, Mr. President. I initially did a motion to form a task force with the C L A's Office, leading the group of affected city departments on the issue of feasibility of acquiring versus building new buildings on behalf of the city and the Civic Center versus acquisition, noting that one doesn't necessarily preclude the other. Parker Center site is a site that we've focused on a lot, and a building is under construction now in the parking lot next to Parker Center, and then at some point, the old building will be removed. And what I want to know, just for the record, now, does the acquisition of Figaro Plaza preclude the possibility of building another building on the Parker Center site at some point?
Councilmember, under your direction, the council passed a motion to establish a task force to look at the feasibility of what we're going to do in the future relative to Parker Center, and the responsibility for that task force and the leadership was given to the C L A. And I'd like to ask the C L A to maybe come forward and answer that question, but I think generally, this acquisition does not preclude us from moving forward and looking at Parker Center site for a future office building.
Mr. Miller, if you could hold my time, please, just for-
Yes, we have, in fact, been looking at that. Your motion actually originally involved really the whole Civic Center area. We were looking at the Mangrove or First Annaloumea properties. We were looking at the police headquarters site, the Art Park site, the new M T D, and the sites near Viviana's. And over time, through the work of the task force, we've really sort of resolved all of those issues. The council approved the Mangrove, R F P, and it's going to be going out shortly. So, the Parker Center site is the last site, in my view. This does not preclude us from looking at that. I think we may want to do that. At some point, the city's going to have to decide what to do with City Hall South. It's an old building, inefficient building that may need to be replaced. We have two pension systems that are leasing space, that are looking to buy buildings, so it may make some sense to, I believe that it makes sense to proceed with this building and look at the feasibility of building another building on the Parker Center site. At the end of the day, we can end up with two. We could sell this building and use it to finance a new building. We could decide it's not feasible. So, this really keeps your options open, I believe.
Thank you very much, Mr. President. I'd just like to move to instruct C L A and staff, if this comes to pass, in addition to, you know, purchasing Figaro Plaza, look at the feasibility of building an additional building on the Parker Center site, once the old Parker Center is removed.
Thank you.
But look at the feasibility of it now.
I will second that.
Yeah, thank you.
Not just because of your charms, but because of the content. Mr. Cardenas is our final speaker.
Thank you very much, Council President. I'd like to point out a couple of things before I close. I need to ask you a question so that people understand. This is kind of scary, over $200 million for 600,000 square feet of building space. How much are we paying per square foot should we go through with this purchase?
The proposed, the cost of the building would be $303 per square foot.
Now, if we were to build a building today, basically, to this standard, Class A, how much would we be paying roughly?
If we were to build it today, it would be roughly $600 per square foot.
Okay, so about double?
About double.
About double. Okay. And we need to occupy space, whether we like it or not. We're going to be occupying space in downtown with our employees. Okay, good. Also, I'd like to point out something that wasn't touched on, but I need people to understand. We did extensively in committee go through the options and flexibility that we have when it comes to maintaining the building and the potential costs of keeping a third party and or going in-house, et cetera. But several things I'd like to point out to my colleagues is, we do have some, definitely have some flexibility. We do not have to make changes overnight. Secondly, we do have the ability to prepare and to understand whether or not we're going to be able to keep the standard of maintenance and what the cost would be, and also to be able to keep the current maintenance in place for at least some time in a comfortable manner, where we're not forced to make rash decisions, correct?
Correct.
Okay. Now, with that, I'd like to ask the C L A and the C E O, and also, I'll start with General Services. Overall, what is your recommendation to the council? Should we purchase this building at this time, after this extensive effort? And with the knowledge you have, should we go forward with purchasing this building, or should we pass up this opportunity?
G S D's recommendation is that we move forward with the acquisition of this office complex.
Okay. Same question to the C E O?
Yes, in fact, we stated in our report that we recommend purchase of the building.
Okay. And C L A?
Yes, I recommend that we proceed with purchasing the building.
Okay. Also, is there any comments or anything that the city attorney working on this matter would like to point out?
No, it's a fairly straightforward transaction.
Come forward, please, so the people of Los Angeles can hear you. In case something goes wrong, they know who to blame. Just kidding.
That's fine. Andrew Nokas, Deputy City Attorney. It's a fairly straightforward legal situation. We pay them $219 million, and they give us the property. It's as-is purchase. Essentially what it is.
Okay, so basically, thank you very much for clarifying that. And on a technical basis, as you mentioned in committee, we have a certain number of days. We basically have until June 23rd to exercise our right to purchase this building.
That's correct.
Okay, which means we need to technically affirm in writing to them that we are going to buy this building, and then we have how many days to be in escrow technically after that point?
The escrow will close on August 8.
Okay, which is about a 45-day escrow? About?
Yeah, that's correct.
All right. And then, in addition to that, we need to make sure that we negotiate and execute a purchase and sale agreement. Now, when somebody's buying a house, it's usually maybe a couple hours with a Realtor or what have you. You sign some documents, initial here and there. It's pretty quick. But in this case, it's more complicated than that. Can you point out to the people of Los Angeles where, it sounds like where your job comes in? We have to make sure we cross the Ts and dot the Is and do it right.
Yes, there are a number of leases on the property, and we have to craft a purchase agreement to take care of the economic aspects of the leases, so forth. There are questions about the operation and maintenance, the service contracts, and transfer of different funds and so forth. It's those types of things.
So, it is more complicated than if we, if we were to vote this out today, then So it is more complicated than if we were to vote this out today, then in the next couple of days, it's all done. It's going to be quite a bit of paperwork, quite a bit of legalese, and it's going to take hours and days, hopefully not too many weeks, to actually get to the point where we and the sellers are saying, these documents are ready to sign, they're in full compliance with all of our interests, and then move forward.
Correct. We've been exchanging drafts and comments and discussion, so we hope to finalize it next week.
Okay, but the main thing, from a legal vantage point, as soon as we let them know in writing that we want to purchase it, some little technicality should not change the course of this decision, correct?
Correct.
Okay, I just wanted to make that very clear, because with all due respect, when it comes to the big commercial business, and you're talking 200-some-million-dollar purchases, and somebody comes in the wings and says, we'll give you another $20 million more if you get rid of the City of L.A. on the purchase, and we'll buy it. Crazy things happen. I'm not saying that's going to happen, but I just wanted to make people aware of the fact that this is a big purchase, this is big money, and there's big interest, and there's a lot of lawyers, excuse me, I don't mean in a bad way. But when there's a lot of lawyers and stuff, things can get a little sticky. But everything should go fine, correct?
Correct.
Okay. So with that, in the due diligence that, like I've never seen before by the City of Los Angeles, I feel very confident and comfortable in telling you colleagues that I'm very, very impressed with all that has gone into this, and also, just on a practical basis, it looks like we should buy this building. I recommend, I know I'm going to vote that we purchase this, excuse me, these buildings, these two buildings. And I just want to say my compliments to everybody in the City of Los Angeles, my compliments to our third-party advisors and experts. This is wonderful work that's been done. And the great part about it is, as Ms. Gruel was saying, we need to have a policy of purchase and lease and things of that nature. We're better prepared today to not only make policy, but implement policy and feel good about it and comfortable that we're good at what we do. So congratulations to everybody, and I was very, very impressed. I don't say that very often, but in this case, I was very, very impressed that people stepped up, and people pushed, and people did everything that they could to make sure they gave us the best answers, honest answers, made sure that people who are giving us answers were giving us the answers, and making sure that we're doing the right thing. So congratulations to everybody. It was a wonderful process.
Thank you.
Thank you. And for the first time, Ms. Hahn.
Thank you. I know that should have been the ending. I just wanted to stand up and say, you know, at the end of the day, we are going to save money by doing this in the long run, and there's been a lot of discussion about this in our committee and here today. But people out there need to know that by purchasing this, we're going to reduce the floor space of our leases in the city by 20%. And then when we have relocated all the private tenants, it will be 33%. So that right there is setting us on our way to leasing less and owning more, and I think that's what this purchase does. The due diligence has been incredible, but I did support this in 2004. I was one of the four people that voted yes to purchase this in 2004. So $100 million later, I'm still going to vote yes on this.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Ms. Hahn. And if nobody wishes to take this into closed session, I think we've had all the discussion we need, so let's vote on this in open session without objection. Okay? Please prepare the roll and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
All right. Go forward, gentlemen.
Thank you.
And we'll send that forthwith without objection. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 31, and it's called special for cards from the public.
Okay, we have a card on item number 31. Miriam Fogler out in Van Nuys.
Well, you know, you folks, you need to be on top of this stuff, because, you know, the hen is not going to leave the fox alone unless you get the hen first to get it in the house instead of the fox. Anyway, to speak on this, we should all have spay and neutering for all our pets. You know, like I said the other day about the dogs and cats being separated, I think this is very good, and I think that we need to bring this into the city, that we need to have the shelter just for cats and a shelter for dogs. This is so important for us, because the dogs and cats need to be cared for and loved. And I was just talking to Councilman Wester about this, that I would like to see this, you know, true, you know, to become tradition, that the dogs will have their own place and cats, because the cats are so cramped up over here in East Valley, and they have no room, one room, and that's all they're in, and they need their own play, space, where the dogs can have their own space. And I think that's the best way to make room for the animals. One on Sherman Way, we can make that for the cats, and the other one for the dog from Van Owen Street here in East Valley. Thank you.
Thank you very much. That is our only public comment card. Anybody wishing to be heard in council on this? Seeing none, let's prepare the roll, tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That's approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item number 37. That was called special for cards from the public.
All right, Ms. Fogler. Item number 37, please. Hold on one second, Ms. Fogler. We can't quite hear you. And you have one minute left.
Can you start my clock again?
Now we can hear you. Go ahead.
Can you give me back a few seconds?
Yeah, go ahead. Don't worry.
Okay, because this is important, this is part of the city. We're trying to save money. I appreciate you bringing this big purchase, but this is important, special events need to be accounted for, you know, because we need to have our services rendered here, our police and fire, and because the CRA taking all the money, blaming, you're trying to blame 13, but it's not, the CRA and all these special events that you're doing here, and you think that you can pass assessments on it, and this is the reason why we need to do something about these special events. You know, HBO event can be paying for itself, for example, and Time Warner the other day can be paying for itself. And I have, you know, I really would appreciate that you would not have all these port barrel projects, you know, these what I call the special events and the CRA projects that are costing a city millions and millions of dollars, and then you try to turn around, and it's 13's fault, Proposition 13, and it's not. It's the CRA, and you're frivolous spending here, the special events. What you're doing here is, you like to give the Pub USA Power a special event $3,000. I mean, I don't understand why you people continue to do this. Sharon Brodeur keeps talking about this, and I wanted to say, where Zima Dog is, I need him here. Thank you.
Thank you. And just a point of information, I know that HBO one and some of the other ones that you cited will be reimbursed, so we thank you for your comments on those. Please open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is approved. Next item, please.
Next item is item 42, and that was called special for cards from the public.
Ms. Fogler, on item 42, you have one minute left.
Well, I'm just going to say, this is the reason why we're being charged for this, because folks, CRA and all these extra expenditures that they're doing, that they are not accounting for, and they're not getting the city reimbursed, I don't see them being reimbursed. And also the CRA project, Grand Avenue project, we have to pay for all this stuff, dear folks, to pay for it by, you know, and this is what they're doing, they're cutting back all our services by adding assessments and adding our fee charge. Don't go for it. Tell them to cut the CRA, get rid of the agency, because it's private, I'm for private development. I'm not for using public money to develop, because that takes away from us, the taxpayers, and this middle class and low classes of people. Thank you.
Thank you very much, ma'am. That's our last speaker on that. Ms. Perry, did you want to be heard on this item?
After we take the vote, Mr. Parks wanted us to go forthwith.
Okay, great. Let's prepare the roll then, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
And without objection, we'll send that forthwith. Next item, please.
Next item is item 15, that's a closed-session item.
Okay. Colleagues, we are now finished with our open-session items. In accord to California state law, we will go into closed session to discuss legal matters that are before us, and we'll come back in open session to announce any votes requiring a public vote as well. So thank you. And if I can ask the sergeants-at-arms to please clear the council chambers, and we'll be back as soon as we're done with this item. Thank you. We're back in open session. If we can now take a vote on item number 15? We don't need to, okay, so that requires no vote. We are now done with the items at hand. Other business, Madam Clerk?
We have motions for posting a referral.
Does it post and refer? Oh, I do believe we have a special. Ms. Perry submitted. Mr. City Attorney on the findings?
Thank you, Mr. President. I'll recite the facts as presented to me by the maker of the motion for the council's consideration of the adequacy of the findings. Last night, gang members brandished weapons from their van and followed two teenagers outside the Trinity Recreation Center. This is the latest of several violent incidents at the location. There is an immediate need to act to direct the Department of Recreation and Parks and the Police Department to report on measures to protect the community from this type of activity. Council must first make findings pursuant to Government Code Section 54954.2 before considering the substance of motion.
Okay, based on Rule 23 of the City Council rules, let's open the roll, close the roll, and tabulate the vote.
13 ayes.
That is now before us. Ms. Perry.
Thanks very much, Mr. President. We've talked a lot over the past several months about gang intervention, diversion, suppression, but what I want to talk about today is violence disruption or violence interruption. It is very rare that we have an opportunity like the one I have before us today, which is, thank goodness, nothing happened yesterday, but it was a close call. It gives us an opportunity to interrupt and disrupt and prevent violence from happening, although the people who pursued these young people into the teen center at Trinity Park were bold enough and aggressive enough that they circled the park a number of times, brandished their weapons, and eventually took off. But the fact that they felt comfortable enough to do that is disturbing, and unfortunately, it's not unique. There have been four killings in this area just within the last three weeks. The situation around Trinity Park is more and more dangerous for families and children. There are two gangs that are at war in this area. We have a pressing need for security in this area and most of our South L.A. parks. And I have to say, the Police Department is doing all that it can, but they can't be everywhere, all the time, at the same time. And I have to say that the need for security cameras has become an emergency as one way to address the urgent need in this park and all the other parks, but I'll focus on this one today. And I also need to know, for the record, that Reagan Parks has a strategy in place so that when dangerous situations like this one erupt, that we can be preemptive rather than reactive. In many of the cases that I've now dealt with or involved myself with, there were often signs, activity, weeks, months before, that precipitated an incident that, in some cases, been fatal. But I thought it was important to put on the record today and to get quick action about protocols that are in place, lockdown procedure, how children are released, and what is done to ensure people's safety, what our own city employees are able to do when they have knowledge that a problem is bubbling or percolating in a community, and what's the protocol for sharing that information, and how we document that, and also how we act upon it and interact with the Los Angeles Police Department. And finally, and I need this answered as soon as possible, what I need to do, what can be done, to expedite the installation of surveillance cameras at Trinity Park. So I'm asking for that action today. I don't think, oh, Mr. Regan is still here. If I could call him to the table?
Sure.
Thanks. Okay, no time left to hold.
Good afternoon, councilmembers. Kevin Regan, Assistant General Manager with the Department of Recreation and Parks. And Councilmember Perry, to answer your question regarding the security cameras, we, Recreation and Parks welcomes the opportunity to put security cameras at facilities that have these types of needs. However, there's just a couple of issues to be aware of. Number one is always funding, and number two is the actual monitoring of the cameras. So those are two issues just to be aware of. We'd be happy to report back to you on strategies we could put in place to try to get cameras at this park as soon as possible. And then, secondly, on the protocol regarding when incidents of this nature happen at recreation centers. The department does have a protocol for how we handle the safety of the children, locking down of centers when any type of activity like this happens. We work with the Office of Public Safety, General Services, and of course, with LAPD. We welcome this, we actually welcome the opportunity to work with your office to further develop these protocols and make sure that they're in line with what you would like to see and the council would like to see, as well as the LAPD and OPS. We can continue to do that, and we can report back to you on all of these items.
Okay, and I would ask if you can do that by the next Arts Health and Humanities meeting, so that we can discuss it, because I think we need to. We're lucky that no one got hurt yesterday.
Right, and I agree with you, and we'd also like to thank you for bringing this to the attention of the council and the department.
Thank you. Okay, that's it. Thank you.
Thank you. Let's open the roll. I'm sorry, Mr. Zine.
Mr. Regan. Kevin, is there ever a situation in this matter where you contract with outside armed security for the location when the facility is open to the public? Or do you just rely on Office of Public Safety and LAPD for security?
We, obviously, our primary reliance is on LAPD and Office of Public Safety.
But they can't be there all the time.
Right. So we do have parks, there are parks in our system where we do have contract security through General Services.
Are they armed?
I'm trying to think about the armed part, and I can't think of any parks where we have armed security. where we have armed security.
Because this was, as I understand, a shooting situation.
Well, there was firearms involved, was there an actual shooting? There was no actual shooting last night, but there were firearms involved.
Okay, so there were firearms.
They were brandishing.
They're brandishing firearms, so an unarmed security officer is not going to do much good with an individual with a weapon.
Right.
I'm concerned that they provide that safety and security, and you may want to look into the aspect until this matter resolves itself, if it does, to have armed security officers at that site. I don't know if there's a contractual agreement where you can hire off-duty officers in uniform. I know LAPD has that at Dodger Stadium and other venues, but for the safety of the population there, that might be an option to enhance the security, not just a security officer, but an armed security officer if the individuals are coming around with weapons, whether they're firing off or displaying them.
Right, so we could, councilman, we could certainly ask the Office of Public Safety to give us an opinion on that and help us understand if that process is something that we should do. In terms of the overall, as you know, in terms of the overall law enforcement and responsibility, OPS now, because they're literally taking on the responsibilities for all the rec centers, is very integral to that, to that whole operation. So we'll definitely speak to them about that and give them the idea and see if that's something that's possible.
Well, I know they do the sporadic patrol, but as far as having someone there during those critical hours in the afternoon or whenever there's a large population of youth at that site, if they could enhance that security by having either armed LAPD or armed Officer Public Safety security, and maybe they could do it on an overtime basis or something just to enhance the security, because I understand the concern, but if there's no security there, then obviously there's jeopardy.
And I think you really, that's the actual issue, is that while last night the incident occurred at Trinity, these types of incidents play themselves out at parks all over the city, almost weekly or monthly we're having some type of incident like this. So the need for armed police officers in these parks is a real need. Obviously, with OPS now coming onboard, it's helped out a lot, but the fact of the matter is, they're spread thin across the city as well, so.
Well, that's why I'm saying in a situation where you've got a high incidence or a high potential for violence, if they could do it on an overtime basis during those critical hours, two to four, six, eight, whatever the hours may be, not 24 hours a day, but where you're having some activity, I know the local high schools when they have the football games, they hire off-duty, uniformed LAPD to provide security. I'm just thinking that might be an option to give some safety at that site, and if the people see a police vehicle there, an armed officer, they may think twice before they want to encounter and disrupt the location. So just an idea that you may want to follow up with.
Absolutely, so we'll make that a part of our report back.
Thank you.
We have Ms. Hahn next, and we are in danger of losing a quorum, just to let folks know.
Thank you, and thank you, Ms. Perry, for bringing this forward. I know this was a very frightening and unnerving event at Trinity Park, but as Kevin said, you know, we have gang violence on the rise all over the city of Los Angeles. It is in everybody's council district, it's not just in one part of the city anymore. Gangs are a real threat, and they're a real threat to our young people, and they're a real threat at all of our facilities. We've been meeting in Watts, you know, every Monday morning for the last year and a half with Wreckin' Park staff, with Housing Authority staff, with LAPD, to specifically address the danger and the risk that all of our kids are at. So, really want you to take this specific request in the special motion, which needs to be addressed immediately, and maybe use it as an opportunity on a larger basis to maybe kind of do, you know, across the board, all hands on deck, Recreation and Parks employees, particularly those who are dealing in our parks and our Housing Authority's developments, to maybe, let's reassess, what do we do? What is our plan? Especially when we're not necessarily going to have LAPD right there, or even an armed security guard right there. Maybe it's time to reassess, what do we do? Is everyone prepared? What does that mean to do a lockdown, as Jan mentioned in her motion, what does that mean to release kids? I mean, I think maybe it's an opportunity so that we would all feel safe, and all of our kids and parents are going to feel safe, particularly as we head into the summer, that if there are young people at any of our facilities and something, there is a threat from gang members, what do our employees do? And it's sad to say that now our Wreckin' Parks employees are on the front line in this sort of war on gang violence, but they are. And they, I consider them a safe haven right now, I consider all of our parks a safe haven going into the summer for our kids, but maybe it's an opportunity to do a quick retraining and put into place some practices that maybe we haven't really been able, or haven't needed to do at such an intense rate right now. So I think you could use this as an opportunity.
Right, absolutely, I think that's a fantastic idea, and I think it's needed, and we will definitely move forward with that as well, thank you.
Thank you. That's our last speaker, let's go ahead and open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Ten ayes.
Okay, that is approved, next order of business. Fourth with without objection on that, I'm sorry. Next order of business?
Mr. President, we have excuses on the desk.
Okay, what are those?
Councilmember Gru requests to be excused to leave at 11:30 a.m. on June 19th and June 22nd, 12:00 noon on June 20th and June 27th for city business, a motion is required.
I'll move in Ms. Perry's seconds. Without objection, those excuses will be granted.
Councilmember Alakon requests to be excused on June 27th and June 30th for city business, a motion is required.
I will move again in Ms. Perry's second. That excuse is granted.
Councilmember Hahn requests to arrive at 11 a.m. on July 3rd for city business, this meets council policy.
That excuse is granted.
And that clears the desk.
Okay. Counsel, any announcements? Ms. Perry, if I can recognize her first.
Sorry.
Yeah, okay. Ms. Perry for announcements?
Okay, you know, I have a very sad announcement, and I hope that the folks listening don't get too emotional about this. I'm sad to announce that Patrick McGreevy of the Los Angeles Times City County Bureau will be leaving us for greener pastures!
Oh!
Sorry, Patrick, I tricked you for once. After eight years and over 1,700 bylines, he has decided to move.
1,702, I believe, right?
1,702.
1,702.
He's decided to go to Sacramento Bureau of the Times, so that he can give us a break, and go to, I can't, I don't know if we can get on camera, to review the work, the fine work of our state legislators.
Well, you know, we have a parting gift for him.
Yeah, yeah, you know, if you don't know Patrick very well, there's a reason why. He doesn't do lunch, he doesn't do small talk, he gets what he needs and then he moves on. But he does believe deeply in the right of people to know what their government is up to, and he doesn't mind stepping on toes if need be. Now, this was not written by me. At the Times, a paper where more than a few reporters actually believe they're working for The New Yorker, his prolific ways make him unusual, because he is one of the few reporters who is willing to write a story, or two, or three, a day. He has never claimed to play professional football, never allowed his wife to drive one of the Times cars, or hired another reporter to do his work for him. Now, I must admit that I'm a little thrilled about not having him breathing down our backs here during council meetings, or calling at 5:00 p.m., saying he's on deadline, and that he just needs a quote, and then you read it the next day and say, "I didn't say that." But, there's a small part of me, no, okay, there's a medium-sized part of me, I'm going to miss him, because he's a talented writer, whose tenure has outlasted four mayors and a few dozen council members. So, when I think about what I'll miss most, I'm torn. The short-sleeve shirts, again, the call at 4:55 to say, "This is Patrick McGreevy, please call," click. But as you move on to the state Capitol, where I know you both deserve to be together, let's join in wishing Patrick the very, very, very best of luck in the Sacramento Bureau of the Los Angeles Times. And I think we enjoyed our dynamic relationship with you here in Los Angeles. Give him a big hand.
And Mr. Reyes wants to add some good wishes, and then I will do the same thing. Mr. Reyes.
Thank you, Council President. Actually, I was just in Sacramento yesterday, and so Patrick will be running these halls. As a matter of fact, there are reporters that would say, "Don't worry, the other newspaper has so-and-so, we have Patrick McGreevy." So that's the kind of presence and acknowledgement you get, Patrick, but it was great to see these stages evolve from the early 90s, when you just started, and running around getting the lay of the land, and now you get to describe it. So I look forward to seeing some more stories, and great stories from Sacramento. I know everything we do here, they feel there, everything they'll be doing there, we'll be reacting to. So, good luck, Patrick, good to know you, and good to see the involvement and maturity and just professionalism that you've offered to journalism, thank you.
Thank you, let me also add, Patrick, you are one of those reporters, as Ms. Perry said, that does believe you should do a story or two or three a day. In fact, if everybody was as prolific as you, the LA Times could lay off another 500 people. So, we wanted to, we've arranged for the Department of Water and Power to give you your supply of bottled water, straight from the Silver Lake Reservoir, and we're very excited. I had been looking forward possibly to a career in Sacramento, but I think I'll stay put for some time. So with that, Mr. Zine, and then Ms. Gruel, and Mr. Labons.
I just wanted to add that Patrick used to be a reporter for the Los Angeles Daily News, and joining us is also Rick Orloff, columnist for the Daily News, but Patrick spent many years at the Daily News, and obviously, the Times saw his quality craftsmanship and decided to hire him, and he then joined the Daily Times staff and covered City Hall for many, many years. So Patrick would not be shy in calling up and asking the probing questions and doing that, and I wish him well and his family and his new adventure up in Sacramento. Started with a local paper, went to the big times, and the best of luck to you, Patrick, as you venture to Sacramento for state politics. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Zine, Ms. Gruel?
Thank you, and Ms. Perry, clearly you know Patrick's not going to cover you anymore by the way you described him there, but Patrick, we like to tease you, you like to give us a hard time, but I have similarly known you through those four mayors and different papers, and you are a man of few words when you talk to us, but you write extremely well and have been a dedicated employee. But those of you that know him, he is a man of few words, except when he's talking about his family, and he has a wonderful family, and I know they'll enjoy as well being in Sacramento. It's a little slower pace, although depending upon the time of the legislature, it can be a little bit more active, but I hope you will miss us. There are some of us that will miss you and others who may not, here in City Hall, but it's been a pleasure to work with you, and we will miss you here in Los Angeles, so good luck. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Labons.
Thank you very much. First, I'd like to introduce Lake Center School from Santa Fe Springs, please rise and be welcomed by the Los Angeles City Council. Give them a big hand, everybody, coming all the way, we welcome you there. Second, Mr. McGreevy, as long as you're standing there, I want you to sit in the center table right there, right there, I want you to sit right there, I've got some questions to ask you. All right, good, he's, ah, good, 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 oh, God.
Just for the record, this is not subpoena power that we're exercising here.
All I want, Patrick, I want a picture for your scrapbook, I have no questions for you, but Patrick, and to all those reporters, you're living in a changing time, where those, I remember Erwin Baker used to sit over here, and Bill Boyarski used to be over here, and these others, and I know there was a tough Friday, or whatever day of the week it was over at the Times, where people were let go, and you're being moved up to Sacramento, which is real important, to give the people the focus, because I don't think they focus enough on government, wherever it is, and I think you'll be very helpful in that, and I hope you enjoy that. And I know I wanted to thank you for doing what you do, you do the job of bringing the news, the press is very important, but it's a terribly dynamic time where there have been less and less people in your industry as before, and they're counting more on quick soundbites from television, it's the newspapers that really get it going, so congratulations, good luck to you, Patrick.
Mr. Weiss.
Thank you, Mr. President, wait, I want to wait for the photo op to end there. That's good. Could you look a little more awkward and uncomfortable, Patrick? Notice the politician slapped his back, but he did not slap Mr. Labons' back. On, on the day last week, when it was announced you were leaving, I called you and congratulated you, and I, and I said, and I'm quoting directly, "I would kill, I would pay any amount of money to be able to do the Patrick McGreevy farewell presentation," and you said, "No way, no how, not a chance, absolutely not," and you meant it, and there's no question that you meant that, and that makes the fact that you're here today for a presentation both incredibly funny to folks who know you, because they know full well how awkward and how much you're hating each and every second of this, which is a reason to drag this out, colleagues, a little more, because it's driving him absolutely nuts. But also, it is, but the fact that that is how you feel is, you know, the ultimate testament to your level of professionalism, and I think everybody here recognizes you as a consummate professional.
And last, we have Richard Arcon.
I think I've had the pleasure of not knowing Patrick McGreevy just about as long as anybody else around here. You've given me hell, Patrick, and it's my pleasure to finally say that publicly, but I guess, you know, to all those critics who were wondering why I came back to Los Angeles, now they understand. It was because Patrick McGreevy was going to Sacramento, and, and now, you know, he'll scrutinize them as he has us. But I'm sorry, we didn't get to know you, Pat, I mean, in different ways, I used to see you over at the Blockbuster every once in a while, you know where, but, but even then, it was like, hi, bye, you know, so, like, what movie are you watching, you know? But, but you know what, there is a collegialism that is derived from relating to somebody on a regular basis, so over the years, so many years dating back to, I think, 1988, when Mayor Bradley appointed me to the Valley Area Coordinator position, and you were with the Daily News at the time. And so, we wish you well, we hope that Sacramento treats you well, we know that, that your heart is down south of Sacramento, but, but there's work to be done in Sacramento, and hopefully your scrutiny will inspire legislators to be a little bit more on their toes and do good work for California. Wish you well, and thank you for, for all the coverage, I think.
And to continue to show our respect to you, we want to interrupt you with not just one school, but a second school, Mr. Reyes, would you like to introduce?
Yes, we're consistent pattern here. We'll introduce Wilshire Park Elementary, is that correct? Of Ingraham and Wilshire, it's councilmember Weston's district, they've been here, so, the camera on them folks, yes, can you wave? Let the folks know you were here? Come on, camera.
Don't worry, we'll get them on you, keep waving.
Over there. Yes?
There we go.
There we are, that can prove to your parents that you were at a school function. All right, congratulations.
And Mr. McGreevy, any thing you'd like to say back?
Parting words.
Some parting words, Mr. McGreevy.
Well, I did want to ask you about something I got, found some information on the other day, but I'll leave that for when I come back, if someday I do. I really enjoyed covering City Council, City Hall, it's a great place, and you guys really do the work that affects people's lives, and you make people's lives better, and that's why it's so important to cover what you do and let people know what you're doing. And just to all the council members and the staffs as well, that have helped me over the years, learn issues and guide me through the bureaucracy, I really appreciate it, and thank you all.
Thank you very much, Mr. McGreevy, and with that, colleagues, we also broke a quorum to show our respect to Mr. McGreevy, and with that, this meeting of the Los Angeles City Council is adjourned.